Good evening. I call this regular board meeting at the Lakota Board of Education, Monday, March 6th to order. Can't hear me? Gentlemen, can we bring that up in the back? I call this meeting at the regular board meeting of the Lakota Board of Education, Monday, March 6th to order. Ms. Zink, would you please call the roll?
Mr. D, here. Ms. Bodie?
Present.
Ms. Casper?
Here.
Ms. Schaefer?
Here.
Ms. O'Connor?
Here.
Bear with us in a new location. We've done a little practice, but we probably will need to continue to work through our logistical and technical issues. So please bear with us as we do this. My mic is not, my mic is not lit at all. So if that means... We have an issue with Mrs. Casper's mic, gentlemen. We'll go ahead while they take care of that issue. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? And Ms. Schaefer, would you please say this?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board, we'll move to number three on our agenda. Approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
We'll move to...
Thank you, Mr. D. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Would you call the roll, please? Discussion?
Mrs. Bodie? As I stated before, no one has the time to digest and review the contents of an agenda that was passed out on a Friday to be used at a meeting on the following Monday.
Hello, pardon?
What?
That a motion or...
Do you have a motion? No, I said discussion.
We made a motion and it's seconded. We have to vote on it. Then if you're making a motion, you make a motion.
You have a second, so if you can have a...
Go ahead. So it's not just, I do not, it is not just inconsiderate of the board members who all have lives outside of their board duties, but this lack of consideration diminishes the role and downplays the responsibilities and liabilities of the board itself, not to mention the content of the agenda. So until this policy is changed to something more reasonable, like a minimum of a week posting, this will be the last time that I vote to approve the agenda.
Further comments, board? Or discussion?
I think that we want to make sure that we have a timely agenda and that we don't have to change it after it's posted. So I appreciate that we've had a longstanding tradition of having the agenda meetings either the Wednesday or Thursday prior to the meeting. I believe that gives us two business days and two weekend days to be able to fit it in. And since I know we all make the board work a priority, I'm confident that we can all spend the time we need to to reflect it on the agenda each time.
And my question is, what about the agenda is not known?
Let's let him speak first before you come back around.
Before.
Ms. Casper, do you have something?
Yeah, I would just agree. I think that four days is plenty of time. As Bodie and I have been having a conversation over the weekend about this. I don't understand. I mean, four days is plenty of time. You know, we're not a fortunate company with complex agendas. And again, I would rather have the agenda setting on Wednesday and Thursday and post the agenda by Friday at night.
Mr. D?
Hello, I'm here.
I have a follow-up.
Mrs. Bodie, you have a final comment?
I believe that we know in advance, I mean, we know on the first meeting during the month or during the year, what we are voting on. Rarely do we have anything that pops up that we need to add. And I think if that happens, we need to reevaluate the the emergency meaning of why we should put it on the agenda. And I also feel that it's inconsiderate to our staff and our employees that we are not, that we are making them work on the weekends for a meeting that's on Monday. And, and I know we posted on, on a Tuesday, on a Friday, but my concern is unlike everyone else here, I'm, I'm, I'm teaching and I have other things that take up my time. And then in the evening, when I'm able to get to the agenda, everyone is out of the office over the, over the weekend, and that leaves last minute questions to be raised on a Monday. And I just, it's inconsiderate of, of our staff. It's inconsiderate of the community. And I think we should be well-prepared. And, and as we teach our students, being well-prepared for something is what we teach them. So why are we not following the own, our rules that we're teaching our children to be more prepared and trying to save everything for a last minute agenda?
I guess I don't understand what the preparation is. If there's something on, if you have something you want, is there, is the problem you have something you want on the agenda? Because the staff isn't working over the weekend. The agenda's posted on Friday. They've already talked about what they're, what's going on the agenda. They've already prepared for what's going on the agenda. There shouldn't be any further work on the weekends for the agenda.
Are you saying that the board president shouldn't, or the board shouldn't, if they have questions, try to seek out answers to these questions?
No, that's not what I'm saying.
Well, that's not what...
I'm just saying that if you look at...
No, you.
Oh, sorry. That if there's something, i- if there's something on the agenda that you would reject?
No, not at all. So I printed out everything that we got sent from the, from everyone, from Adam and Mr. Vogelmann and, and everyone else. And Saturday night, I was literally sitting around with my papers everywhere, trying to read and, and look at what we are being given. I'm checking and making sure, and I'm, maybe I'm the only one that does this, but I'm checking to make sure that everything on the agenda I am informed about. And so I wanted to call Adam this week, and I discussed this with you earlier. I read the date wrong. I'm like, oh, I can't call him. He's in a wedding. And so that was kind of frustrating for me because I had some questions. Unfortunately, I had time this morning, and so did Adam that we can meet. But it's not fair for us to have to bother the staff on their weekends. And for you guys, I have a little ones. And I like to do things on the weekends, but I'm sitting in my house preparing for a board meeting. And I think it would be fair to the rest of the staff if we could come out with the agenda so we had more time to prepare. And I, I think it's a simple question. It's a simple ask. I'm not quite sure why it's become so...
Madam President?
I think...
Ms. D?
Hard.
Okay. For the record and for maybe those that don't know how the agenda is made, we meet on Thursday, 12:00 PM. And almost everything you see in the agenda, probably things that might be a little bit different is when we have maybe school spotlight. But almost every time our agenda does nothing new. If anybody and the board members know if you have anything you want to add to your agenda, which is completely different, you can submit it to us prior to our meeting on Thursdays. But if you look through it, like most of the time, there's nothing new. So in essence, maybe I may want to ask a question. What is it particularly that is new in the agenda that you should have, you would have wanted to prepare? If you ask a good question to start with.
Well, I think what this shows is that the board is putting their personal feelings at the forefront of their decisions when it comes to staff and students. I'll wait for a more professional board.
Madam President?
One moment. I'd like to ask Mr. Vogelmann and Mr. Zink, would you like to weigh in on this at all?
I've seen as hell, this is my second meeting doing this. It, I'm, I'm fine with, I don't feel like I'm crunched for time. But if we need to get stuff earlier, we possibly can. I know one of our biggest things is HR and the hiring piece that we try and always get up to the last minute so that we don't have a lot of changes between when the agenda is posted and when the actual meeting happens. That's the one that I know we're kind of, we're kind of constricted on time with.
And I, and I will say, we do have policy, I'll come right back to Mr. Zink. We do have a policy that governs this, I believe, and I think it's 0165.1C that governs what we do. And so if the board does have an interest in changing it, then certainly we can submit it through the policy committee. And I will count on each of you to do that if you're interested in that. Mr. Zink?
Ms. Bodie did come in this morning and we worked through the public participation sheet. I'm glad that she came in and was able to see my process on that. And I appreciate all of you really working hard to not bother us on the weekends and stuff, but we try to be available when we can for whatever you guys need. But we do appreciate that effort to kind of give us a little bit of time at times. So I do appreciate that. But yeah, we've, we've worked hard really since the first of the year to try to make sure that we get agendas set. And once they're set, that we don't have a lot of change and it gets posted and such. There's been a lot of moving parts that we've been trying to navigate through. So I appreciate everybody's patience with that.
Board, any further comments? Yes, Mr. D?
I do. To make it very, very easy and professional. I would need Ms. Bodie to particularly pick out something on this agenda that was, besides school spotlight, what is it here that is new that you would have prepared for? Because by now, I think we should have gone far further in our agenda. We have business to conduct. But if you are making excuses or you have reason for your excuses, be specific and give us evidence. Show us, I will plead for your indulgence. Show me what is still in the agenda right now that is different.
I'm not really interested in going over everything. You're not ready to discuss. But I would like to talk to Rob Vogelmann about the HR issue. And I think that maybe that would be something that if there is a person hired on a Tuesday or a Wednesday, then they would just go on the next agenda. I, I don't think that, that there's a real emergency there.
Would you like to respond to that, Mr. Vogelmann?
Yeah, the problem is being able to start on time and take care of those things if they're, if they're a needed hire right at that time. But we, we can talk. I mean, that's fine.
Well, I'll say my niece is a teacher and she had a situation where the principal who hired her was in trouble. She didn't realize that when she was hired. She was going to give notice to her prior employer, and then she was not board approved because the board did not have confidence in that principal. And if she had given notice prior to being board approved, she would have been in a very tough situation. So that's a real life example that impacted my extended family that I understand why staff, it is important to them. While it may feel like a technicality, if you are the person getting approved, you want that final stamp to know 100%.
And I'm sorry to interrupt. And part of the reason the HR is so long is because we haven't had a meeting in a month. And so we've had a month worth of activity happening.
Okay, so that could be maybe, that could possibly be something that we do not get right away. But I mean, we, we could work with that. Obviously, I don't want to affect teachers and staff. However, we could also be aware that that's what's happening. And so if there's an emergency, then we could, you know, make accommodations for that. But that's just my feedback.
All right, again, board, if you're interested in a policy change, please let Mr. Vogelmann know and the policy committee can address it.
Can you repeat that policy number?
0165.1C, I believe.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on. With no further discussion, please call the roll on approval of the agenda.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes. All right, we'll move to opening items. I have some comments that I'm going to defer until later in the meeting, but I did want to talk to everyone for just a moment. Mr. Vogelmann, the naturalization ceremony at East is at the 14th?
I believe so.
So we've been asked to give a reservation for whether or not we're going to come so that they can arrange seating. Mrs. Schaefer, you'll be there? Mr. D, 10:30 in the morning on the 14th at Lakota East, will you be at the naturalization ceremony?
Yeah.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes, I will make that work.
Mrs. Bodie?
I'll be there.
And 10, at East?
East at 10:30, I would suggest with parking and all that you're trying to really post to tell the possible.
Right.
All right, I will make sure to get that back to her. We'll move to superintendent comments.
Yeah, I have a couple of comments. First of all, last Monday, we had some interesting weather roll through. And through that experience, we found that we had some holes in our emergency operations plan when we had some kids already en route home when the sirens went off, some kids sitting on the bus, getting ready to leave. Some kids already out the door, heading toward cars to go with their parents and trying to realize what we need to do in those situations that we really didn't have a plan before. And so we need to be better at that. And so we have reviewed procedures with Peterman about what will happen if weather sirens go off when kids are on the bus, either en route to school or en route home, that they will take precautions to ensure all kids are safe. Anytime there is a thunderstorm warning or tornado warning, that we will not be dismissing children until those warnings have passed. But we can be better than what we were. So we're updating our emergency operation plan and we will update that with our staff and then roll that out to our students and parents as well, so that we do not have a similar situation that we had. It was just the, the timing. It, it was unfortunate timing, but then we learned from it. And so we can be better and we're going to learn from it and ensure that we do a better job of ensuring that our kids are safe in a weather emergency. The second comment I have, just kind of a follow-up to the February 6th public participation, someone brought up about college credit plus enrollments. And yes, that is, that is also a concern for us. And I know that our secondary curriculum team is looking at how we can expand opportunities for kids to take more college credit plus courses. Typically, in the past, those college crep credit plus courses have been for more of the honors and advanced kids. Talking about how can we roll that down to more of the college prep kids and maybe offer like college credit plus economics instead of it being the full year honors economics, but open so kids can earn those college credits. And so like we said, so they can have those credits to go do and and be what they want to be and allow that to, to give more access for kids to have that college credit plus experience so they can start their college transcript in high school instead of waiting until afterwards. And who knows, that may spur them on to, to a college that they probably never thought of doing before. So I just want to address that from the last public comment. Those, those are my comments.
Mr. Vogelmann, what's your timeframe on turning around new procedures on the weather situation?
We've already met with Peterman. We have it in writing now. It's just a matter of pushing it out to our buildings. Mr. Sarge is finalizing the update to the emergency operations plan, which will get pushed out to all the principals. And then once they have it, just start on a communication then from the building to the parents. So it should be this week.
And has there been a response back to the parents that have contacted us?
Yes, every parent that's contacted me, I've responded to. And I believe that the buildings that have been reached out to by parents that those, those have been responding to as well.
Great, thank you.
I have a comment. Mrs. Bodie? I just want to say thank you for your humility in handling the feedback from the community. And thank you for your due diligence on fixing this matter with the, with the weather.
Thank you.
Ms. Casper?
College credit plus, Mr. Vogelmann, when we do a college credit plus course, the university has to approve the curriculum, correct? Or it has to be the same curriculum that they teach in the college?
Yes.
So to do a, how does that work then to do just a semester college credit plus when it's a whole year college?
Yes. Because basically, three credits of high school count as six college credit plus credits. And so what they do is they provide us with a curriculum similar to a semester of college. You get, you get three credits. And so it's the same thing, kind of the time of a semester is in college. It's the same thing that we would do, like within economics class. So they would earn equal hours. It's just, it's experimenting on trying to find some other ways to get kids some, some more college credit plus.
Yeah, that's awesome. I just was curious how that works since they have to
Yeah.
have to be a college curriculum.
Yeah, our main providers are UC, Sinclair, Miami, and Cincinnati State. And so those are the four local universities that are, that are, we have some, we have a lot of one-offs.
Right.
Universities where kids maybe have family ties to some universities where their parents went. And so they try and reach out through them and do some special one-offs. We have a lot of those, but those four that I mentioned, those are, those are our big ones that come in and say, hey, your algebra teacher that is teaching this CP Algebra II, I mean, the college credit plus algebra class, it will count for CCP.
And college credit plus class credits are only able to be used in state, is that correct?
Correct, Ohio.
Those courses are reviewed with those four universities every spring, I think?
Mm-hmm, yes. And they, and they will sometimes set the standard on, if they want the students to use a textbook, they would be their textbook that they would, they would require the students to purchase.
Yeah.
And just to clarify, in the college credit plus, it's my understanding there, the state requires them to be accepted for credit within the state, but they don't necessarily have to be used for that course. They're guaranteed, they could potentially give them elective credit.
Right.
And then there are some out-of-state schools that may at their discretion
Yes.
choose to, to provide credit. So it's not, there have been students who have gotten it. It's just not guaranteed. So...
Yeah, there's no given. So if you do college credit plus through Cincinnati State, but you want to attend a college in Tennessee, it, it may, it may not transfer for you.
Yeah.
If you want to go to a school in Ohio, it's guaranteed to transfer.
Any other questions from Mr. Vogelmann? Mr. Zink?
I just wanted to thank the treasurer's office for getting the ninth auditor of state award with distinction. We've received that again this year. We've, we've received the it's actually, it goes a lot further than just the treasurer's office. All of our buildings, all of our staff, everybody really does contribute to this. And so it's really truly a Lakota award. So thanks to everyone for that, helping us look good and be fiscally responsible. The auditor's office is planning to come to our next board meeting. They were trying to come tonight to give the award so that we could invite the staff up. Kind of a nice way to celebrate. So next meeting, we will have everybody come for that. So that's all I have.
Great, thank you. We will move to our student spotlight. And Mrs. Fuller, if you'll come up on the stage for us? This is somewhat like a dress rehearsal.
Yes. We are flexible. So good evening, everybody. While teaching financial literacy may be a new state mandate, beginning with the class of 2026, Lakota students have been able to take advantage of this class for years. At West Freshman, teachers Dave Koger and Emily Henderson use real-world lessons to engage their students and help prepare them for the future. This year, enrollment in the class has doubled with nearly 500 students learning about financial literacy. Ms. Henderson shared that financial literacy offers endless lessons, life lessons to students. It is extremely rewarding to be teaching it and helping the students understand how to be financially successful. But don't just take Ms. Henderson's word for it. Ninth grader Jade Nielsen said that she loves the class because it helps her prepare for her future and teaches you to be financially stable. Jade ends applying what she recently learned about how to start saving money and the impact interest can have on a purchase. Her goal, to buy a car when she turns 16. Over at Union Elementary School, theater isn't just for secondary students. Union offers an after-school drama club for its students. Following last year's review called Union Goes to Broadway, the group is gearing up for its spring production of Madagascar Junior. The club is led by Katie Bone, Lori Owen, and Kelly Land. In addition to having a blast learning the catchy songs and fun choreography, the students are also learning cooperation and teamwork while experiencing the joy of seeing musical theater production come to life. And of course, you can't have a successful performance without a great student tech crew. Union's student crew is led by Jessica Epstein and Jean Turk. In addition to painting sets and props, the students are also learning how to operate the lighting and sound systems, writing the playbill, and assisting with makeup and costumes for the actors. Beyond having fun, the students are balancing learning new instructions each week, memorizing and rehearsing lines, and being ready to learn more the following week. All of this helps develop perception, memory, attention, and concentration. Being involved in performing arts also helps students build stage presence, confidence, and quick thinking. It also builds communication skills and imagination, all while self-esteem is soaring. So last year, Lakota's changes to the way students receive gifted services tripled the number of students who were served. One example of this is through subject acceleration. Amy Alexander is a gifted intervention specialist at Cherokee and Van Gordon Elementary Schools. And she's here with four Cherokee Cheetahs to share their experience with math acceleration.
Hi, everybody. My name is Amy Alexander. In 1988, I was hired by Lakota at Freedom Elementary, the year that it opened. So I always consider freedom and myself to be twins. So over the last 35 years, I have taught in eight different Lakota buildings. I've taught every grade from one to seven. I've taught music, art, gym, technology, and gifted. I've served as an instructional coach for Lakota staff, and I have served as a gifted intervention specialist the last few years. I've worked with thousands and thousands of Lakota children over the years. And I have to tell you that my very favorite part is when I get to show off my babies. So this is a gift to me. Thank you. So I am the gifted intervention specialist at Cherokee. And tonight, I've invited a few of my students from Cherokee to join me to tell you a little bit about a very exciting new acceleration path that we've explored this year and the amazing results that we have seen so far. I'm going to give you a little bit of background, and I'm going to give you some data. And then I'm going to turn you over to the real stars, and they're going to tell you all about the experience so far. So last year, when I came to Cherokee as the GIS, I worked weekly with about eight to 10 kids or so at each grade level who were identified as cognitively gifted. As soon as these gifts or these groups got going in August, it was very apparent to me really quickly that Cherokee had an unusually high number of students in third and fourth grade who were not only highly intelligent, but had an incredible, incredible capacity in math. Now, as someone who's had 35 years under my belt, this was like a huge, like, wow for me. Not much ruffles my feathers after all these years, but having kids like that that I got to work with was just wow. And so soon I was, you know, talking to other people. I could see the potential of these groups, and I really wanted, I really wanted to do something different. I was able to pull them just once a week, but when I was working with them, I was able to do math work that was two, three, four years ahead of where they were in class. And not only were they understanding it, but they were able to apply it to new situations. They were able to ask a lot of questions about it. They were able to just dive in and just could run with it. I was so inspired by their excitement and by their potential. The opportunity was there, and I just really wanted to do something different. So I went to Lauren Webb, who's our assistant director of gifted services. And I said, you know, I really want to do something different. And the main reason is that because I've looked at thousands of kids' data over the years, gifted kids, and I know that gifted students are the hardest to grow. They come in at this level, but they're already above grade level. And it's so hard to get them to grow, especially in math, because they're already ahead. And so if they learn the same material that everybody else is learning, they're just not going to grow. And their skills remain stagnant. And I just couldn't stand that for this incredibly, incredibly talented bunch of kids. I was so invested in them, and I wanted to see, I wanted us to really embrace their potential. So when I talked to Lauren, we talked about different types of personalized plans that we could put together. Lakota has always offered the ability for kids to subject accelerate as a way to meet their needs, but we've used it so sparingly. And over the years, I taught math myself for 26 years in Lakota. I taught sixth grade math and advanced math. And I, in that time, I had like a handful of kids only that had been subject accelerated. And I thought, I, I know the pathway is there, but I want, what can we do with it? So my idea was that we would look at these kids at Cherokee and put together a plan where we would accelerate clusters of kids as a cohort. And not only would they skip a grade level in math, but they would do this with the And not only would they skip a grade level in math, but they would do this with the support of their friends that I've been meeting with all year so that they would be there um, to help each other, not just with the schoolwork, but with the idea of going to a whole new grade level. They would be together as a cohort, as a group. Um, Lauren was interested. She encouraged a lot more research. She encouraged more thinking. She encouraged a lot of discussion, which we did. I went to Val Montgomery, the principal. Um, she wanted to know more too. So we started looking into logistics. We started talking to a lot of people around the district. How could we make this work? And so by the time spring rolled around, we brought parents in, we talked to folks and we all decided that we wanted to go for it. So at this year, or this year at Cherokee, we have 10 students who are fifth graders, but go to sixth grade advanced math every day. We have nine fourth graders who go to fifth grade math, math plus every day. And we have three third graders who attend fourth grade math plus every day. I have some representatives from those cohorts to talk to you about their experiences, but first I want to just share a couple of the earliest results with you. Um, this is winter map scores, which measure achievement from fall to winter. And I just want to put the little caveat into remember that our gifted kids are the hardest ones to grow. So our third graders that were accelerated to fourth grade, when we compare them with fourth graders, our third graders got the very highest, the second highest and the seventh highest scores on the fourth grade winter test. All of those kids scored in the top 9% of fourth graders in the nation as third graders. Our fourth graders, thank you. Our fourth graders who were accelerated to fifth grade, when we compare them to all fifth graders, got the very highest, the second highest, the third highest, the fifth highest, the seventh highest scores in the fifth grade, and all of them scored in the top 14% of fifth graders in the nation as fourth graders. And our fifth graders, our fifth graders who were accelerated to sixth grade, when they were compared to all sixth graders, got the highest, the second highest, the fifth highest, the sixth highest, the eighth highest and the 10th highest scores in sixth grade and scored in the top 9% of all sixth graders in the nation as fifth graders. So this is, this is preliminary data. Obviously, this is one set of data, but what I can see so far from the data is that when you give kids the opportunity to stretch outside that traditional grade level band, these kids, the cohort cohorts are excelling academically. Now it's time to have them tell you about their experiences in skipping a grade in math. I have Kate from third grade, Naomi from fourth and Jeff and JP from fifth.
Hi, my name is Kate and I'm a third grader at Cherokee. Every day I go to fourth grade for math with two other third graders. Going to fourth grade math is really great. Getting to skip third grade math made me feel smart and proud of myself. Now I really, 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 really like math. Before I accelerated, math was too easy and kind of boring, but now it's my favorite class. I do fourth grade math, but my teacher, Mrs. Cleaner, also helps me with some high school level math, like the Pythagorean theorem and geometric proofs. I feel really good about math class now. My peers said these things about accelerating in math. It made me feel confident and good about myself, knowing that people believed I could skip a grade in math. I'm really excited to go to math now because I know I'll be learning new things instead of doing things I already know how to do. If you don't really love math, you shouldn't do it. If you love math, you should. I'm happy that going to fourth grade math instead of third was a choice for me. It's a great opportunity for someone who is up for a real challenge. Going to fourth grade math has made a very positive impact on my education.
Hi, my name is Naomi and I'm a fourth grader at Cherokee. I'm actually the age of a third grader because I skipped a grade at Heritage. Now I'm at Cherokee and I skipped a grade again, but this time it was only in math. I go to fifth grade math every day with eight other fourth graders. I feel really good that my teachers at Cherokee have let me move ahead instead of being stuck in a classroom, being taught stuff that I already know. It's a great opportunity for kids to be able to start doing harder math when they're younger, if they're ready and they want to. Here's some of the things my fourth grade friends have said about accelerated math. It's made math a better and more interesting subject for me. It's giving me more challenging problems that are helping me grow in math. It makes me feel very good about myself. It makes me feel like I've really accomplished something. I went from not liking math to loving math. It's important for kids to know that just because you might be offered a chance to accelerate in math, you don't have to do it. You shouldn't do it unless you really want to. It's not a requirement. It's definitely harder than math has been before, which means it's just right. I feel smarter. I like a challenge. I feel like I have a big brain. Here is what's I think about math acceleration. I feel better about myself than I ever have before. Every time I mess up, I just remember what type of math I'm doing. It's harder. It's supposed to be harder, but it's not so challenging that my brain turns to gel out and I'm definitely learning new things.
Hi, my name is Jeff and I'm a fifth grader at Cherokee. Every day for math, I go to sixth grade advanced math with 11 other fifth graders who are also accelerated. I really like it and I'm very glad to be a part of it. Here are some things my peers said about being excited to sixth grade advanced math. I like school so much more than I used to. I'm hardly ever bored anymore. I feel really good about myself. Like I can do more than I thought. I find math more fun and interesting than before because I'm always learning new things. A lot of sixth graders, you know, is one of the smartest kids in the class. This makes me feel confident, makes my self-esteem a lot better. It's a lot of work. You have to be organized. I feel one of a kind. It makes me feel special. It'll really grow your brain and be challenging. So if you think you're ready and if you really like math, you should definitely do it. And accelerating has made me doubt myself, less I feel better about myself. Here's some of my thoughts about accelerating. In the past, in math class, I got to skip all the instructional videos here because I already knew how to do the math. I mostly did a lot of online math, like prodigy. I got really good grades, but they didn't mean that much to me because I already knew how to do the math that our class was learning. Since I got to skip fifth grade math and go to sixth grade for math, it's very different. I'm learning new math every single day. It's challenging. I still get good grades, but the grades have a lot of value for me because I'm learning new things and working hard to earn high scores. I really love math class now.
Hi, my name is JP and I'm a fifth grader at Cherokee who goes to sixth grade advanced math every day. There are 12 of us fifth graders who go to sixth grade for math and we really, really like it. Here are some things my peers said about going to sixth grade for math. I like math so much more than I used to. I'm hardly ever bored anymore. I struggled at first, but my friends supported me and helped me adjust. I feel really good at math. I feel like I can handle it as it gets harder. You're not by yourself. You're with a group of friends who are around your age. Everyone helps everyone else. It's the first time I have been challenging math. I really like it. I have really expanded my group of friends. It makes me feel like I am enough, that I can do hard things. Here's what I think. Before I accelerated math, I flew through all the lessons and finished all of my math class work in like 20 minutes. There was never anything new or any challenges. Now that I accelerated, I spend every minute of my math class time learning new material. I can always work on complex projects or build my portfolio. There's always something challenging for me to work on. I'm really glad I had the chance to accelerate in math.
So just as a quick closer, 35 years I've been here, I think this is the thing that I am the very most proud of. I love these children. I am so invested in this district and I am so invested in Cherokee. I am so invested in these kids. I'm so proud that I'm part of a district that lets us try new things, try new things that work. We really truly are walking the walk and not just talking the talk. When we talk about personalizing education, making it work, helping kids reach their full potential, they're standing right here. I'm so proud of them. Thank you.
Stay there, please. Wait a minute. Could you all step back this way toward the microphone? Just give the board a moment to make comments and ask questions. Well, let them stay there where we can still hear them. Well, let's put the girls up front so we can see them, okay? There we go. Yes, definitely. So Cherokee, you are rocking it. We are so proud of you. We're proud of your teacher who has invested so much and done a terrific job with her students. Board comments, starting with Mrs. Bodie.
One common theme that I heard when you were speaking was the confidence that this, um, program is giving you. So I am thankful for the, that the district recognized or the school, the building, recognized the gift that you have been given and took the steps to help you guys become successful in math and in the future. So, good job, guys.
Again, great job, great job speaking. I loved all the things you had to say about your grades. I know somebody said, um, grades have value because you're being challenged and how you love rising to the challenge. So I think that's so important and so many of our kids do such a great job of that. Um, I'll also say, uh, my daughter had the opportunity to take advantage of a, uh, accelerated math class and the friend she made is her college roommate. So you might be standing next to your college roommate right now from, from the friendships you're making, um, making right now. So I think that's so important to have those friends that you're able to see some of those tough times through. Um, and congratulations on all that. But what would you, I know somebody touched on this, but what would you tell your friends who are thinking about that and going, ooh, that's a little too scary and it might be too hard? What would you tell them?
Stick up to the mic a little bit, okay?
I would tell them that like, everyone helps you and, um, if you really put your time into it, it, it really turns out to be a good thing in the long run.
Awesome. Anybody else?
Um, I would tell them that you'll have your friends there to help you through your tough times and there's nothing to worry about. Means if you do go through a tough time or you don't know how to do like what the work that they gave you, like you have your friends there to help you.
Absolutely.
I would tell them that there's nothing to be afraid of and it's really awesome.
I would tell them that you don't have to do it unless you really want to. And if they think that they aren't smart enough, then I would tell them that if they weren't gifted, then they wouldn't have been chosen.
Very good.
Well, first of all, congratulations. You guys did an excellent job speaking. Um, and I love the way that most of you, I think maybe all of you told us what your classmates thought. So you went and asked your classmates before you gathered your information. You can just shake your heads yes on this. You don't have to come to the mic, but being accelerated in math and being in your cohort, does it make you love math even more? And how many of you, just raise your hand, want to do some sort of math-related field when you're grown up? Well, congratulations and to our staff member. This is, this is, these are our staff members. They go above and beyond every single day to make sure our kids get what they want.
Mr. D? Just speak loudly.
Congratulations to all of you. Listening to a lot of you gives me a lot of hope. And I hear a lot of time, self-esteem, love it. Even though when you struggle, you reach out and you overcome challenges. Miss Amy, thank you so much for what you do. And this is the result, like you said, it's right there in front of us. And we are proud of you and keep at it. I believe that we have engineers in the future. We're going to have scientists of all sorts. We're going to have business, people of all sorts. Everything boils back on math matters. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Let me see which microphone I can go with. Something that I, I was going to say when I was listening to everybody talking is it used to drive me so crazy when I was in school and somebody would finish the math problem. Like if I was really working hard, do you guys ever go through that or was it only me? That's, that's one, and I was actually, and it was called something different, but I was actually in a gifted program too, because my teacher had told me that I was very good at word problems. So I didn't like just any math, but I seemed to be good at the word problem. So congratulations to all you guys. Maybe one day you'll end up being the treasurer here.
Just as a former ma- junior high math teacher here in Lakota, uh, my guess is when you guys get to junior high, your, your teachers will start with your tests first. The reason we do that is to make sure we got the answers right. Because if, if we start marking things wrong on your papers, then we start to second guess ourselves. But you guys are leading the way. Proud of you. Ms. Montgomery, Mr. Stapleton, Principal Assistant Principal, thank you for bringing your kids out. Ms. Alexander, for the work you do, uh, with these kids. And, uh, just keep going. Just keep going. Proud of you.
Thank you.
Before, Madam President.
Yep. We know they probably have some homework to get done tonight, so we'll give them just a moment.
Got math homework to do. They're probably working on their math problems out in the audience.
So I had mentioned earlier that I was going to defer a statement and we're going to just wait till our students are out of the auditorium.
And then I would also like to say something before we start public comment.
I'd like to make a statement about something that happened recently. On Sunday, February 5th, I received a Facebook notification that I'd been tagged in a post by a community member. And that's how I learned that a link from my Board of Education Facebook page, a link that was for many years a valid link to my campaign website, was redirecting to a foreign marketing site which contains some inappropriate pictures. I was devastated this had happened. My team and I moved quickly on Sunday to take the following actions. The link was immediately removed. District leadership, Vice President Adi and legal counsel were informed about what had occurred. I posted a notice apologizing and cautioning people about visiting the site. It should be noted that official board member Facebook pages are not under Lakota's control, but they're the responsibility of individual board members. As I said earlier, this was a campaign website, which I hadn't used regularly for communication in several years. During the last 15 months, there have been many distractions for our leadership team, our district and our community. And I know that we're all wary and I regret that this happened and further added to the distractions for my fellow board members and leadership team. I believe it's time to make tremendous efforts to refocus on what matters. And we just saw what matters, our students. This board has stated many times before, for the sake of our students, the time to refocus to work together and not against one another is now more important than ever. In closing, I'm not sure that any of us can stop this type of activity from happening. Simply be aware and please learn from my experience and take the time to check your social media regularly. I will await the will of the board on any further actions and we will I will await the will of the board on any further actions, and we will start with board comments on the issue. Would you like to start, Mrs. Bodie?
Yes, I was with Adam this morning, and I would just like to state that public comment, I saw the process in which they take the speakers in order off of the Excel spreadsheet, and put it, and send it out to the community. And so I know that there has been concern about potential switching orders and whatnot. But the way that Adam does it, I saw him personally take the whole process down. And if there was any, any, I guess messing with the order, it would be through the, someone hacking in through his Gmail and changing the order that way, or it would be on Adam himself. And I can, I, I believe that Adam is not going to change that order. So, and, and I have trust in him and the process, that he, he showed me today that it would be very, very rare for someone to mess with the order of a public comment. So I just, I know there are some concerns expressed, and I just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer.
I had one, one more thing, too. On, with on that, I would like to motion, I have a motion to extend the public speaking comment section. I saw the people who were speaking this evening, and there are some new faces on there that I have not heard before, or new names that I have not heard before. And I know that we have a consistent amount of parents who speak regularly. And I would like to hear some new voices, and I would like to hear some more concerns that are a little bit different than what the typical concerns are. So I would like to make a motion to extend the public comment until the last person is heard. We have 19 or 20, I believe.
Is there a second? Hearing none, the motion dies. Thank you, Mrs. Bodie. Mrs. Schaefer?
I appreciate your comments. Again, it is an unfortunate situation and a distraction for what we need to be focusing on. While my name has never been part of my campaign, my name has also been purchased as a domain. And so I anticipate when people Google my name in the future, at some point, they will run into the same situation. Again, you know, my campaign page was Schaefer for School Board. People could say, "Why didn't you buy your name"? Why, you know, there's two professors, one at Illinois, one at Nebraska with my name. There's a child's author with my name, you know? I don't know who owns that. But it does make you fearful when we do see things like this are happening as to what is the next thing that's going to be brought forward to try to discredit and distract us from the work that we need to be doing.
Mrs. Casper?
Yeah, I, you're right. Now, this day and age, everybody needs to keep an eye on their social media. So much can be hacked, so much can be said out there. You're allowed to say whatever you want on social media, whether it's true or not. And there's no way for anybody to dispute that, because it comes down to a he said, she said, and you, you can't even really defend yourself. So I, again, appreciate your comments. Can, am I able to address Mrs. Bodie's question, motion? I just, for me, I don't, the reason that I, I did not second it, and this is just me personally, is that I don't feel it's appropriate for you to have seen the list when the rest of us haven't seen the list, and then decide that you want everybody to speak. I also think it sets a precedent. Next month, maybe Mr. Adi will see the list and see somebody he wants on there, so then he decides that we should extend public comments. I think we have to stick to a policy in order, to be fair for everybody.
And you bring up a good point.
Thank you. Mr. Adi, do you have comments?
My comment, my comment on your situation is, is very, very sad, and I think it's very scary that such a thing can happen to anybody. I believe that we all have one purpose. And the purpose is to make sure we do what is right for the school, and for the students, and the taxpayers. When I got the message from you, I was, I was so scared. And whoever is doing that, I think it's time to stop. And if anybody also liked to use that as a reason to, to make all kinds of comments, it's time we stop, because we're, we're playing with the future of our kids. And it just can happen to anybody. So, please, those that are making, I've seen a lot of posts on Facebook. Some tried to make fun of the situation, some laughed. Some are also trying to drag it as something of joy. I don't wish that on even my enemy, my worst enemy. I would never wish that somebody steal their identity and do that to them. How much more, maybe a colleague. So I think you're a victim, and I hope the district will look seriously into this, because she's a victim right now. And it scared me too when I hear Julie's two names were porchers. Wow. It's time we preach what we talk about. I mean, we do what we preach, which is, we are Lakota. We're proud to be Lakota. So let's be each other's support. That's all I will say about that.
Madam President.
Mr. Senk, Mr. Wilkman?
I have no comment.
No, I don't have anything to add. I just, I appreciate Darby taking the time. She'd mentioned that, you know, there was some discrepancies, people wanting to know the process and how that went. And I found it was just easier to show her the process versus trying to explain it. So I appreciate her time.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Mrs. Bodie.
I would like to kind of respond to Kelly's comment. Number one, there was an invitation sent out to all board members to join this morning. So unfortunately, I was the only one there.
Because I trust Adam, I didn't need to be there.
And second.
Let her speak, please.
And second, you do bring up a good point, and I think we should be able to see the list. And for some reason, the president has decided not to share it, and chooses not to share it where I've asked multiple times. So Madam President, would you be willing to share the, the list of speakers so we can fairly see who is signing up to speak?
Mrs. Casper?
I didn't show up because I trust Adam. I didn't need to actually see him do it, because he told me he does it fair. So I didn't need to show up to see if there was any foul play going on. I don't understand what's, why you, why we need to see the list prior. I don't, I don't understand.
Those are board members' thoughts?
I think I trust the process right from the beginning. I, I don't have any doubt about what everybody is doing. I believe that we are focused on doing the right thing. I trusted the process, and I've never doubted it.
Mrs. Schaefer, anything?
I think when we mod, when we, again, see a list and then potentially modify our time afterwards, or even if we don't see a list and think that certain people are more likely to be speaking one night than another, that that sets a dangerous precedent. I like that we have a policy. We stick with that policy. It's not arbitrary how we apply that policy, so it's not a question of was it done fairly or not fairly. So therefore, that's why I prefer to stay with our current policy.
All right. Is there any reason why that we can't share the list with the board members?
I think the question's been asked and answered of the board, so we're going to move on to the next step on the agenda.
I also have one more comment. I'm gonna return, I'm going to save my statement of your pornography posting to the appropriate, and save it for the appropriate time, which is at the end of the, the meeting. So I do have a statement.
Well, that was a false interpretation, but you're welcome to do that. We'll move to public comment. Our public comment microphone is going to be down here on the left side of the stage. I'm sorry, right side for all of you, but the microphone sitting on the floor there. Each statement should be limited to three minutes, and we're going to have our three minutes right up here. There's a timer on the table up here. You will hear it buzz. We'd ask that you pay attention to that, and when you see your time coming close, that you would please wrap up so that you finish before the buzzer goes off. All statements need to be directed to the presiding officer. No person may address or question board members individually. And we'd ask that you please are recognized by the presiding officer before you start with your name. All statements, the board doesn't hear compliments or complaints about Lakota local school employees during the public participation portion of the meeting. We do welcome your comments, your complaints, and your compliments through emails, website submissions, conversations, and all other available outlets. Participants are permitted to comment on items listed on the published agenda for the board meeting at which the participant registered their intention to participate. You may speak on the agenda: child nutrition, communications, community relations, curriculum, facilities, finance, operations, programming, safety, school board, special education, student co- and extracurricular activities, technology, and transportation. Again, please pay attention to your three-minute time limit. We'd like to hear from as many people as we can this evening. I'll call your name, and I'll ask that you please line up as your name is called so that we can move quickly through the list and have as many people speak as possible. We'll start with Linda Nix, followed by Emily Jackson, followed by Jennifer Richardson. Go ahead, Mrs. Nix. Just say your name for record.
Hi, my name is Linda Nix. I would like to say a few things. One, the spotlight tonight was amazing, and Cherokee, my kid's a Cherokee cheetah, always will be. But the fact that they're doing a cohort, and not just letting one kid on their own, I think that's huge. Forty, well, we won't say how young. A long time ago, I was offered a chance to change and go up in math, and I said no because I was too afraid. I didn't have a support. But having the kids go in a cohort, I think, is so important, and to give them that support. So I'm really happy to hear that. And then let's see here. As far as the signing up and following the, anyway. I think if we could, when you sign up, I think it would be helpful if you had to check a box that you read the policy and you agree to follow the policy. You get one warning, and then the mic goes off. It's that simple. Because the civility is just gone anymore, and it's, it's, something has to be done somewhere. So if, if you automatically know going into it that you've read it, you have to follow it. You don't follow it, you're done, plain and simple. So I think that's something you could maybe consider coming into. And then, Madam President, did you know what you, Heinz, Dallas Cowboys, and Microsoft have in common?
I'm not sure that I want to. Please go ahead.
Your domain's all lapsed. So it happens, it's human, there was no intent. And to even try to suggest that it was intentional is just complete ridiculous. So, and then what else? With the whole, I think, really. Thank you, guys. I know it's a hard job, keep doing what you're doing. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mrs. Nix. Mrs. Jackson will be up, followed by Jennifer Richardson, and then Mary Ann Pinsky. Mrs. Jackson?
Emily Jackson, West, can you hear me? Better?
Yes.
Emily Jackson, MVS, West Fresh Mom, this is the team in these facilities. I am commenting tonight on statements made in a previous board meeting. I don't think Ms. Bodie understands the Save Our Schools Act is required by the Ohio Department of Education. Maybe it's because she creates her own homeschool curriculum rather than sending her kids to public schools. I easily found on the ODE's website number three, where it says, "The approved training programs for suicide awareness and prevention, and violence prevention must be evidence-based and include the following." Again, number three, "How to identify appropriate mental health services within schools and larger communities, and when and how to refer youth and their families to services." Their families, their families are referred to services. The Saves Act does not mandate Ms. Bodie to seek treatment. It says that her family members are told she is exhibiting behavior detrimental to herself, her family, and the community, and that treatment could help her. Ms. Bodie did not speak for me in the previous board meeting when she compared suicide prevention programs to periods of erasing people in history. She does not speak for me when she says Lakota does not involve parents. Ms. Bodie does not speak for my child, who is in and knows the value of Hope Squad. Ms. Bodie should be removed from all subcommittees. She denies taking the OSBA oath when taking her position, despite her child holding the Bible that she placed her hand on while stating it. She will continue to try and make a mockery of the board meetings. She is here for her fan base and not our students. You have the ability to make other meetings effective and efficient for our students and our teachers. They deserve it, you deserve it, and we, the parents, deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Jackson. Mrs. Richardson is up. Mary Ann Pinsky follows, Jamie Manier follows that. Mrs. Richardson?
My opinion regarding Mrs. Bodie's comment last month about her being here in the Save Our Schools program, her lack of empathy for partners, her behavior, and it just shook me for the heart. I'm very attracted to her empathy. Mrs. Bodie, it's been very clear, her good, not the LPTP student, it was feelings about rape, and it's a social school. She doesn't like them. I just think it's not a coincidence that the number one cop death with an LPTP student is suicide. So she says in post-conference about the chair of the meeting, and now she's stating that she also gets into the active behavior. So I'm disgusted, and I know, and I'm shocked. We thought we heard the worst of wars come out from her mouth, but that one was totally a lie. And it was just awful. But I knew that it was a cop death, I was just looking at you and my ears, my eyes. She showed that, and last year, I was in a program with the cops at UDL, and I sat there listening and hearing about more about UDL. I thought, I really wish that Mrs. Bodie was here. Maybe she'd learned what UDL is, and why it's so important for our students and all their loved ones. So Mrs. Bodie, I'd like to share.
Please direct your comments to me. Thank you.
Social emotional learning helps students of all ages to better comprehend their emotions, feel that emotions truly influence relationships with others. These learning behaviors are then used to help students make positive, responsible decisions, create friendships with chief of schools, and build positive relationships with others. Provide support of social emotional learning, or self-awareness, self-management, emotional awareness, relationship skills, and making thoughtful decisions. Self-awareness, recognize your emotions and how they impact your behavior, acknowledging the strengths and weaknesses to better gain confidence and realness. Self-management, take control and ownership of and not to make decisions in embarrassing situations, as well as then and after. Social awareness, the ability to put yourself in shoes of another person who may be from a different background, also, who wants to help others, to practice initiative and ethical manners, things you find in schools and communities. Relationship skills, the ability to build relationships and help relationships with people from diverse backgrounds. This helps students focus on listening to and engage with people. She's willing to draw a conflict, and you're in the right direction for a lot of jobs. They can use thoughtful, changing how, how, so that one can just wait.
Mrs. Richardson, you'll need to run.
We, we, and well, the others as well. So I think the board can work with that.
Thank you. Mrs. Pinsky is up. Mrs. Manier, Heather Cameron follows. Mrs. Pinsky?
Hi, you, Mary Ann Pinsky. The general elections of odd enough years, like Obama or Hillary, are classified as non-partisan elections. Do you know why? It's because the services that school boards, township trustees, and city council members provide is so essential to the community that political affiliation should not be about whether you're a candidate. There is not a Democrat or Republican way to return possible or to pick up trash. But in the past few years, the political rhetoric has increased with members even campaigning and endorsing other candidates. It's become very charmed. Once elected, an official's responsibility is to the community, not just for specific, for political party, not just to the voting board. for political party, not just to the voting board. And what's worse, in our school district, we have seen this stat, the Constitution and education help hostage our religious fervor, fear and conspiracy. I have a little quote for it. Quote, "Everything we do is designed to provide a future, ready, student-centered learning experience for every single child." Some of the leaders will show that intermission pains and entertaining so many actions that you have in the past year shows a total lack of respect, understanding and ability to live up to that mission. I think that one thing everybody in this room can agree upon is that we all want our children to have successful nature, but where this board previously worked towards expanding opportunities for our students like the cyber security program, you are destroying our parent program down and weakening our children's chances of success. In terms of a job for you, you are family. And rather than look at what new program the Russell District needs, you are constantly distracted by pettiness. Some of you act without a fear in political agenda and forget that you are a partner along with a child's family, community and church. Your job is to educate and provide a staff-supported learning environment for students, not to educate them to put their oral posts in fear or running those in uniforms on. I promise you, if a family or community is in more than Cincinnati's stuff, they could be choosing Mason's or Lakota because of the circus this school board has become and lack of leadership and vision you fail to display as a virtue. So when we hear a board member saying nothing will happen until we have to serve the school board, it becomes clear you either don't vote for your colleagues or you're incapable of doing your job. And I hope these leaders figure it out before the members.
Mrs. Manier is up. Mrs. Cameron. And then Mr. Carlin. Mr. Carlin? Are you?
It's hard to see.
Okay, Jamie Manier.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Jamie Manier. Linda, I wasn't sure how to best communicate my thoughts to you at this point. The lack of my response to my questions over the months combined with you greeting me at Republican meetings in recent weeks as if all is well is what prompted me to come tonight. So much has happened over the last couple of years with you in particular that has been difficult to swallow. To say that you've been dishonest is an understatement. In fact, I can't think of anything that you've done that's been transparent and honest. This started with you not supporting parent authority during COVID and then the Matt Miller disaster where you withheld public records requests, violated the First Amendment by disallowing public comments commenting Mr. Miller and in a shocking close to the string of dishonesty, in the face of you reading the superintendent's admission to, one, having a sexual fantasy conversation about three Lakota students and, two, his admission to publicly advertising his wife to other men for sex on Craigslist. With that alarming information in hand, you said calmly at the November 21st board meeting, "The Board of Education's highest priority is the safety of its students. These claims against Mr. Miller were found to be false by multiple agencies." Mrs. O'Connor, I ask you, how are the claims false when they are confessed to by Mr. Miller? Then during the same statement, you went on with the celebration of Mr. Miller by saying the board would like to express its full support for Mr. Miller. Mr. Miller is an excellent leader in our district and he is a shining light in Ohio. How do you, with any sense of morality and respect for Lakota and the community, lift Mr. Miller up and celebrate him like a hero with Mr. Miller's vulgar confession in one hand and the microphone in the other? You never discussed Mr. Miller's confession. You first tried to hide it and then ignored it. But here's the problem. When someone withholds and ignores information, it is a suppression of truth. This is lying and you lied to the community. In regards to the email you sent me yesterday trying to convince me not to come tonight, you were right about the scripture saying, "Go to a brother if you have grievances with him." But there's a second part to the scripture. If he won't listen, take others along so that the presence of witnesses will keep things honest and try again. I and many others have come to you individually as scripture says, but you've done and said nothing. Tonight is the second part of the scripture, which is bringing it out in front of others to have an account of the issue and keep things honest. Finally, with no attempt on your part to bring clarity or honesty to what happened, I'm asking you to discontinue greeting or engaging me in public. I'm not interested in pretending all is well.
Mrs. Cameron is up next. Mr. Carlin.
My name is Heather Cameron.
One moment, please. Please stop the time, can we?
I got it.
Mrs. Cameron, Mr. Carlin and Mr. Argo. Go ahead.
My name is Heather Cameron. I guess I thought we were under a new superintendent right now, didn't know we'd bring up the old superintendent again. That song, "Why are you so obsessed with me?" comes to mind. I have certain viewpoints regarding curriculum, religion, diversity, et cetera, and I appreciate hearing other viewpoints. We don't have to agree on these viewpoints, however, as a public school district with students from different backgrounds, this district has a responsibility and an obligation to accept, educate, accommodate and support every single student. This is the bottom line, a non-negotiable. No single set of morals, values or religions should ever dictate what a public school does. Acceptance does not equal indoctrination. Just because a small minority of people in our district lack understanding and empathy does not mean that their moral compass should guide our district. The guiding principle is meeting each child where they are. Supporting each child where they are will look different for each student, helping them by providing the skills they need for future success. This is not indoctrination, but instead, we are required to provide a fair and equitable education to all students in this district. Also, I have read several articles over the last few years about how data reported to the state can be manipulated by school districts. There are ways that some districts make things look better than they are. For example, some local districts show 100% attendance rates. How can this be? Are all absences excused or does when we offer certain courses and at what grade level versus when we test for them have an impact? I'd love to hear the board speak to this. Do these numbers impact each district's report card? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cameron. Mr. Carlin, Mr. Argo, Mrs. Bretta Steggi.
Madam President. We have heard from a teacher and tonight I'd like to share a couple of comments. As teachers of Lakota in this school district, we have seen an unprecedented switch to virtual learning in 2020. With that came new responsibilities and expectations. We called on families to make sure their basic needs were met. We dropped off materials to students' homes. We did everything we could to maintain that relationship with our students without the ability to be together in a typical classroom setting. We've learned new technologies and we transformed our curriculum to reach students. All this was very stressful and we did it without hesitation because it was what our students needed. As students will come first, teachers, administrators, board members and superintendents, all of us work together as one cohesive unit. And Lakota is an incredible school district. I see it every day as I walk through the halls of my building. Students are supported, happy and learning. Teachers are working tirelessly, collaborating, bending over backwards to meet the needs of students. Teachers are professionals. We have gone through four years of undergraduate education in our instructional areas and passed our licensing exams. Many of us have advanced degrees in specialty areas. We work from state standards and use the curriculum provided by the district to teach students what we need to know to be successful and productive members of our society. We are knowledgeable, prepared and we always have the best interest of our students in mind. We should be trusted and supported by all members of our school board. Meeting after meeting, we have listened to personal attacks on students in the LGBTQ community, transgender students in particular. In recent years, Lakota has been a safe and welcoming community where teachers were free to be themselves and get the support that they needed. Or I should say students, I said teachers and students. It was a point of pride for our schools. Now the same students, and so many in our district, feel unsafe from being themselves. Teaching is a career, but more it is a passion. What is happening here is happening all over Ohio and all the other states. Acronyms like CTR, LGBTQ, SEL is getting thrown around to demoralize students and teachers. People who've tossed these out in regular conversations do not have any formal training in or understand the educational best practices. They say these things without context or understanding. They're told that this is the evil in our school. The manipulation, the manipulation has been easy. The end game of this manipulation is to destroy public education. I call on the board members of Lakota Local Public School District to stand up and fight for your public schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Argo, Mrs. Bretta Steggi, Tina Carpenter follows. Go ahead, Mr. Argo.
Thanks for giving me some time to talk to you. So the first thing I wanted to address was the new public comment policy and rules. So my understanding, based on what I've seen, is that the proposed changes were mostly driven by a need for safety, increased safety, but that was before the location change to this new location was made. And it seems like this location change may actually handle many of the security issues that prompted the new policy. So it seems like it may be unnecessary. Another issue I have is the current proposal would have essentially no record available except for a summary of comments during the regular business meeting. And we've been there, I've been summarized in a way that didn't represent what I was trying to say multiple times by the current board president. So another concern I have is that the actual proposed policy is just one word, a change from shall to may. And there's kind of like a secondary public comment policy that is all basically up to administration or the board and whatever they feel like. And I think you should be very intentional when you change the public comment policy and vote on it, just for transparency's sake. It needs to be content neutral and I feel like this may open you up to lawsuits when you're deciding, oh, well, do we have the new way to do public comments or the old way? And lastly, as was mentioned during the policy meeting where this was brought up initially, it is hard for working people to arrive at 5:30. I myself came to the meeting before this and was 10 minutes late to that. So I do have some other concerns about the master facilities plan and I'm not going to get to all of them because of time, but the highlight is the more that we delay the master facility plan, the more money is wasted on, whether it's on portables because we can't redistrict or whether when we have schools that have 10 to 15% capacity available or potentially we could have a situation where because we waited so long, some of our buildings that were not on the right side of the repair, replace calculation that OSCC makes, now we might have to replace. So I would encourage the board to make haste with the master facilities plan. And that's about it based on the time. So thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Mrs. Bretta Steggi, Tina Carpenter and Bess Davison Odle. Go ahead.
Hello, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Kate Bretta Steggi. I'm the parent of three children in Lakota School District. My pronouns are she/her and once again Darby Bodie does not speak for me, nor do I share her views or agree with her statements, positions or basically anything. I just wanted to extend a big thank you to the community at large. We've had one of the largest amounts of people within one month reach out to come and sign the legal complaint to remove Darby Bodie from the Lakota Local School Board. We do still need to get more signatures to get it done. Please check www remoedarbybode.com for information on signature count progress, how to sign up to sign the complaint, we would come to you and community signing opportunities in the future. That said, I am still gobsmacked by the statements made regarding suicide prevention efforts at the previous meeting by Darby Bodie, actively proclaiming to be against suicide prevention efforts and not only that, but comparing it to Nazism, Nazis. We're talking about Nazis, comparing that to saving the lives of students to a group that committed mass genocide and killed over 6 million Jewish people in some of the most horrific ways you can imagine, to a program designed to save the lives of students who for whatever reason felt that they didn't belong in this world. And, you know, apparently referring to children in the district as pure evil and abominations just wasn't far enough. She's now attacking programs that save children. I really don't know how much lower you can go. She's been falling down the well for months now, but I'm pretty sure with that statement, she just hit the bottom of the well. How dare you resign? Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Carpenter is up. Bess Davison Odle and Benjamin McCall. Is Mrs. Carpenter here? Bess Davison Odle, and please correct my pronunciation.
Got it right. It's Odle. Thank you. I'm Bess Davison Odle, a mother of two students in the district and I'm also a mental health therapist. I'm reading this letter on behalf of a bipartisan group of concerned mental health counselors and social workers living and working within the Lakota School District regarding recent inflammatory language directed at mental health services and Hope Squad by Ms. Bodie. Having lived and worked in the district for many years, it is important that we speak up to ensure our children receive appropriate mental health care in the school setting. We are proud of Lakota's investment in mental health resources to promote health and wholeness for our students, faculty and parents. We would like Ms. Bodie and other concerned board members to speak directly with Lakota mental health therapists about their concerns rather than using political rhetoric to defame the care we offer to parents and students within our community. We do not see truth in the rhetoric that mental health clinicians are separating parents from children or that peer groups such as Hope Squad are not qualified to provide significant support to students. If there is truth to this allegation, we gladly welcome discussion to improve the care we offer the community. Comprehensive school mental and behavioral health service delivery systems promote wellness, resiliency, motivation and engagement, skill building and self-advocacy skills. Adequate access to school-employed mental health professionals improves delivery and integration of school-wide programming to foster positive school climate, prevent violence and balance physical and psychological safety. Without a highly qualified workforce of school-employed mental health professionals, schools lack the capacity to provide comprehensive social and emotional learning and mental, behavioral and academic interventions and supports. These services are more important than ever as our country continues to experience a youth mental health crisis, which the U.S. Surgeon General has referred to as a public health crisis. Approximately 40% of children will experience a mental health concern by seventh grade and each year, one in five students will experience a mental and behavioral health concern that rises to the level of a clinical diagnosis. Rather than addressing mental health needs when they arise to the level of a crisis, which is evidenced in the recent surge of pediatric emergency room visits and hospitalizations related to mental health concerns, a stronger focus on prevention and early intervention is needed. For these reasons, we urge the board to work collaboratively with mental health professionals. Our nation's youth mental health crisis requires our district to respond to Lakota's own unique needs. We look forward to working with you to collectively ensure students in our community are supported to reach their maximum potential. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McCall is up. Mrs. Raghu Rayman. And we may not have time for anyone beyond Mr. McCall. Go ahead, sir.
Benjamin McCall. Lot of things, but business-wise, I'd love to hear status on Lakota Master Plan, Master Facilities Plan, because that's really something we should be paying attention to. I've always said that it would be great if Congress could have a child in the room. That way we'd get a lot of laws passed and a lot of bickering stopping and to see the kids tonight talk about the things they love, it's a moment that they could teach us a lot because one of the things that one of the children said is like relying on each other, being able to feel strong when the kids are around you and not feeling scared because you have people that support you. And I think the community, all of us could learn a lot from them. With that, the meeting specifically, I understand people don't have a lot of time and time is of the essence, so when it comes When it comes to agendas, I understand the concerns of being able to have all the information, being able to talk to all the people, but not being a board member, just a general community member. I looked through, it took me 15 to 20 minutes to look through today's agenda and to look at all the documents, also knowing that I'm not a board member, so there's certain questions that I may not have as a result of that. So barring any extending you any circumstances, four days should be enough to be able to be ready for any type of meeting. I think that's pretty straightforward and simple. We as a community, I think we have a problem with letting go. It's gotten worse and worse since the pandemic and the catcalling and the negativity, it just reinforces the chaos. And if we just add to the chaos, we can't talk to each other. If we have, we can't talk to each other and we have chaos in front of us, then we can't understand each other. And it's very easy for people to box people in boxes, which none of us like to do, and to dismiss those boxes. Many people who have talked to me, that's something I say all the time, I don't want to be dismissed. I don't want to dismiss anybody on the board. I don't want anybody to dismiss me. I don't want anybody who's negative up here to be dismissed, because if someone has a valid concern, they should be able to state it. But if we keep dismissing each other, then we're not going to be able to talk to each other. And if we can't talk to each other, we can't understand each other. We can't understand each other, all we're going to have is chaos. So my problem is, and my main issue is, if we're a community, then we need to be able to talk to each other, not just our own, not just the people we agree with, and then meet sitting down and listening, not disregarding and shying away. So quit dismissing each other and start talking to each other, because then we'll be able to understand each other.
Thank you, Mr. McCall. I'm sorry, Mrs. Raghu Raymond. Hopefully I said that correctly. Our time is up for now. Would you please send your comments to the board? We'd like to hear from you. And that goes for anyone else on the list that did not have a chance to speak tonight. We'll move on board to board updates. A, the Policy Committee, Board Policies, First Read. Mr. Vogelmann.
Yes, on February 10th, the Policy Committee met, excuse me, after the Community Engagement sent forward a recommendation for policy to review, and that was the policy that's in front of you to change the one word in the third paragraph from shall to may. The hopes of the Community Engagement Committee was then to open up a listening session in front of the meeting instead of doing it during the meeting. It would be similar to this policy, except they would remove restrictions that they feel are there. For example, it would be similar to what the public participation policy is now, except it would remove letter K, letter M. It would change the time from a public comment from 30 minutes to 45 minutes. It would also give flexibility of trying to get in more speakers and changing the times from either two to three minutes, depending on the number of speakers. Therefore, you could get close to 22 speakers during the listening session. And so this is just up for first read and just for discussion.
So it's a one-word change. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Do you want your motion? I'm sorry, that's a first read. We don't need a motion. Is there a discussion?
Comments, questions? Yeah, I have a comment.
Go ahead.
I'm not for this policy. It's restrictive. It proves that we need better board members, and I'm not voting for it.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Very well, thank you, Mr. Vogelmann. Move to Board Reports. Board Policy Committee, I think we just covered that unless there's anything else. And when is our next update?
I did meet with our Neola rep on Thursday, February 23rd. We covered the new update of about 30-some policies. And so at our next policy meeting, that's scheduled, I think, for May 12th, we'll go over those 30 policies. Once again, it's one of those things where I think 10 or 12 of the policies deal with just one topic, either tobacco or technology. But when you change definitions of tobacco and you have five different policies, because you have one in administration, you have one in classified, you have one in personnel, you have one in students, and you have one in general operations, it's one change, but it shows up five times. So it's a good number of that. And I give Neola credit, they're trying to get out in front of all of the AI things that are taking place out there and trying to get some things in policy about that early. So I appreciate our Executive Director of Technology was there to kind of go over those with him, and so he's had his eyes on it. So when I bring that to all of you on May 12th, it's been vetted.
Thank you, Mr. Vogelmann. Business Advisory Committee has not met yet. C, Butler Technology and Career Development Schools, Mrs. Schaefer.
Our last meeting was on Valentine's Day, so it was very brief. No staff was required to come other than the lucky superintendent and treasurer, and we just approved things that were required to be approved. There was no prolonged business meeting. With that said, there still has been discussion about the $300 million in the governor's budget for career technical education. At a recent conference with the state, John Graff said he was happy to take 30 million of that on behalf of Butler Tech. So we'll see how we do on that math. We're still making good strides with the expansion of the program in Middletown and Hamilton, and their true goal is to make it so we are not limited in the number of kids we can serve, but that all kids that desire to be served by Butler Tech will be able to. So that remains the goal. We've talked before about the Cafe Lee at Butler Tech that is open on Wednesdays and Thursdays for lunch. You can go to the Butler Tech Culinary Arts Facebook page to access the signup genius and strongly recommend making a reservation. This week's menu is coastal crave, and Gavin from East is one of the two chefs who's in charge of, they, not only they manage the front of the house, they manage the back of the house, they help procure the food, they do the whole thing when they're in charge of their particular meal. And this young person actually worked at a butcher shop as their first shop, their first job, and that's how they got involved. They then moved to Kings Island as a line cook, and their ultimate goal is to open a small restaurant or a food truck. So if you would like to support our East student as well as the Col Rain student and the rest of their team, please join us at Butler Tech on Wednesday and Thursday.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Community Engagement, Mrs. Casper.
We had DPC meeting last week. We had a mental health update from our mental health department on services that Lakota provides and services that families can access. We have President's Council on Thursday. We had two community conversations last week, one for our staff and one for the community on strategic plan. The staff one was fairly well attended and they gave us some great ideas. It's always good to see from their perspective what's happening and how the strategic plan affects what they do in the classroom every day. The community one was not as well attended as we had hoped, but again, it was a busy day. There was a lot of things going on. So we do appreciate when the community does come out to one of those community engagements or community conversations. We are looking at having two more at least this year. We are going to hold on dates just to make sure we can get everybody that we need to in the room, but we will have one towards the end of March on, actually on mental healthness as it moves into a virtual series that will be coming in April. And then we will be having one for our English language learners sometime hopefully in May, if we can find a date. It's really hard to coordinate as we get closer to the end of the school year. It's hard to coordinate everybody's schedule to try to find dates when there's not a band concert or choir concert, because again, we want the community to come out and our parents, but there's so many conflicting things towards the end of the school year with all kinds of academic awards. So be looking for that somewhere soon.
Would you like to talk about, I forgot the name of it. It's not State of the Schools. What are we calling it?
Oh, Light Up Lakota.
Light Up Lakota.
Yes, we had to look at moving the State of the Schools and then also kind of rebranding it into a different platform in which we're really spotlighting kids throughout the night and having them rotate through. And I think it's just a chance for people to come out and see what's happening in the schools. And I look at it as also a chance of a student who's maybe a sixth grader getting ready to go to junior high can go visit the junior high table to see what's kind of happening in the school they're getting ready to go to as kind of a spotlight. Instead of it being a presentation at the end, there's just rotating small presentations going on by the different schools. And so that'll be, I believe it's April 11th at Lakota West, 6 to 8. Encourage people to come out and tend and just kind of see what our kids are doing.
Great opportunity to see what's going on in the individual schools. Thank you. Diversity Committee has not met. No, they haven't. Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee, I'll be sending a public notice out to change the Finance Committee from March 15th to March 14th, same time. It's going to be at 3 o'clock. So I appreciate Ms. Schaefer and Ms. Bodie being able to work with the schedule and do that a day early. So that's all I have on that right now.
Thank you. Legislative Committee, Mrs. Casper, anything?
I don't have anything at this time. I thought you might have something. We do have OSBA. You could, I think you'll talk about the Southwestern.
There is a Southwest, excuse me, Southwest Regional Conference. That will be Thursday night, and US Bank will be receiving the Friend of Education Award for the work that they've done with Lakota and helping to build our cybersecurity program and the internships and those opportunities that they've provided to our students. So I know part of our board is going to the Chamber Annual Event, and some of us will be going to the Southwest Regional Conference. Looking forward to that. I've also been asked to serve, just to notify the board, on the, what has taken the place of the Former Federal Relations Network. And this will be with COSBA, which is the new organization that took the place of an SBA. And I've been asked to serve on their federal network, which is called the Federal Legislative Advocacy Group. And so that will be ongoing this year. I'm looking forward to that work. Mr. Zink, Mr. Vogelmann, anything on legislative?
I can go ahead. This is the last year of our biennium budget, so this is typically the fun time year when we're talking about one of the many renditions of what that new budget could look like. But we have House Bill 1 that seems to have taken the spotlight a bit from the biennium. House Bill 1 is kind of an interesting topic. It's talking about making the state income tax a 2.75 flat rate across the board for everyone. And in order to do that, they're talking about doing away with the 10% rollback that the state provides to the schools and local governments. The reason this has become such an interesting topic and really has taken a lot of our time in the last couple of weeks is because with House Bill 920, this will then roll everything back up, because they're talking about potentially reducing the appraised value from 35% down to 31 and 1/2, which essentially would make up for the 10%. But then House Bill 920 is going to roll all that back up. So potentially this could lead to a bigger tax burden on the locals, on all of our residents. So that's kind of been an interesting, there's a lot of.
Without a ballot issue, right?
Yeah, that is correct. This is all, yeah, based on current law, the way that could work. So this has really been a bit of a headache, because then this also leads into a different area of funding, which is that state funding for schools. Because it used to be you'd look at the schools as the whole state aggregate. Well, when everybody would essentially decrease by 10%, well, then it offsets and everybody is the same. But with the Fair School Funding Plan, everybody's looked at individually. So this is also going to potentially mean that the state budget would increase in what the value was. So there's a lot of implications on this one and where it's playing. So it'll be interesting to see how that ends up shaking out. So other than that, we have had a first view of House Bill 33, but nothing to get excited about at this time, because we will see a lot of different variations before we get to the finish line at the end of June. That's all I have.
And a lot of the things that I've seen come across are all about the budget right now. A lot of focus on budget. So defer to Adam and his wisdom on those issues.
I like the way you just passed that back to you, Mr. Zink. Okay, thank you. Safety Committee has not met? Or had, I'm sorry, did meet?
We did meet February 10th, and hence part of the reason why we're here tonight is in that, in that safety meeting with Butler County Sheriff's Representatives and West Chester Police, talked about moving location here, but also took an opportunity for the board to go through Al's training session to kind of see what that is and understand what that looks like, similar to what our students do. So was able to experience that at that day at the Plains.
Very good. That's it for Board Reports. We'll move to number nine, Administrative Report, the school report card. Mr. Vogelmann.
Yes, just once again, goal is every month to give a report to the board at the first meeting of every month to help the board stakeholders understand the purpose behind the activities that are taking place in our schools and also explain how those activities are impacting students, staff, and parents. We are getting ready to head into the season of state testing and report card season. For those people who don't know, every year the state publishes Ohio School Report Cards for each school and each district and inside of that district, every single building that has students that are taking state tests. Districts and schools are scored on five component areas of achievement, progress, gap closing, graduation, and early literacy. Districts and schools can earn up to five stars in each of those five areas. So ideally, per, according to the state report card, per school would have 25 stars. Fortunately, last year Lakota earned 17 stars on our report card. No one in our organization is satisfied with those results. We know there's a balance between testing and student experiences that can't be captured by a formal type of assessment or star accumulation, but we also can't ignore how the state is looking at us. And so we have to find that balance of how do we look at our state report cards? How do we also give our kids experiences without disregarding one or the other? And so what is tested? Well, testing starts in third grade. It begins with English Language Arts and Math and runs all the way through eighth grade. So every year, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth, a student will take a test toward the end of school year in math and English Language Arts, but also in fifth and eighth grade, they will also take a science test. And that's where the scores come from, from the state report card. Once a student enters high school, then they are tested no longer by grade level, but by specific course offerings that they have to take. These high school tests are referred to as end-of-course exams, and those come in seven different areas. They're, also students have to take two English Language Arts. They have to take Algebra I, Geometry, Biology, American History, and American Government. And so those are where it's a little different. It's not necessarily by your grade level, it's by the course that you're taking. And so that's, those are the scores that the high school earns theirs. But with that, for students in high school, they have to then use those to score at least 18 points on those end-of-course exams for graduation. Once again, they can earn up to five points, but they have to score 18 in order to be eligible for graduation in those areas. And they can retest and retake and to ensure they hit those 18 points. And they have to get them across those areas. And so as I mentioned, in our organization, we were not satisfied with those recent results. And so members of our curriculum team spent time this last summer planning and preparing to help bring back a strong focus on data results and reviewing specific targeted steps to ensure our students are performing better on those state tests. There are several key components that have been implemented to help improve our student scores, but I want to highlight some specific steps tonight that have currently been in place during the school year. First of all, there is a program that the state of Ohio created a new portal in 2021 for districts and schools to use called Restart Readiness. What this is, is a portal that allows teachers in schools to identify student progress toward Ohio State testing standards and produces actionable performance data for each teacher to use for their each individual student. These practice tests are full-length assessments that mirror the content and test characteristics of Ohio State tests in terms of length, test specifications, blueprints, and tools available. These tests are scored in real time and produce rapid results to the teacher. So as the students take these practice tests, when they are finished, the teacher would be able to see the results, how they did. Years ago, when we started with these tests, we usually had to wait three months, four months, five months. But now that technology has caught up and we are, we supply our students with Chromebooks and they're able to use those Chromebooks and we're able to work through those tests faster, the state is getting better on the response to that data as well, and now we have a tool that helps us as well. And so what our curriculum does, team does, is they prepare follow-up steps for teachers to use when reviewing that data that they get back from those assessments. These follow-up steps help us target areas of strength and weaknesses to guide individual instruction paths for their students in their classes. It also incorporates teachers having professional discussions and learn from one another and how they're producing greater results based on the data. Our curriculum team has helped create what we call OST action plans that each building and teacher should be using. They help guide that building leadership team to review their building data and create a plan of action to address areas of concern. For example, one exercise that they have done on a couple of our PD days is when they look at their state scores and then they also look at their restart readiness. look at their state scores, and then they also look at their restart readiness scores. They ask each teacher, "Give me your five best standards." As you look at your scores from all your kids, what are your five best standards? What are your five weakest? And so they know what those five are. And then what we try and do is find those people where my five may be your weak five. And so let me help you understand how I got my kids to be stronger there. And so it's having that professional discussion about, hey, your kids consistently score well in this area. What are you doing differently? And having those discussions and forcing that discussion to take place in the fall and in late winter when restart readiness takes place. An example of targeted response as part of their OST action plan of how can we look at what's happening with our students in real-time data and make changes in the classroom. Like I said, it's done two, two times a year, and we would have just recently, this past week, I know we did, some of the students took their final restart readiness to kind of see where they're at. And the good thing about restart readiness is exactly like taking the test. And so it's kind of the same format, the same type, same type of questions. They have to use the same type of calculator that's available to them. And so they're getting practice on taking the test. And that was always the big thing. We always hip up the date of the test, and kids are taking a test that they've never taken before or experienced. But now they're experiencing it, and they're used to the test. And so there's some familiarity, which we believe is helping. Another part that is good is we're talking about teacher resources. Our curriculum department in all of our buildings are required to have data discussions about their students ongoing throughout the year. They're using that time in their building leadership team meetings to look at the student data and come up with those action plans to talk about what they want to do as a building and as grade level, and even specifically in the, in the different content areas. For those conversations to be valuable, there has to be resources available to them in order to implement them. And so some of the resources that curriculum team has provided them is, first of all, creating personal reflection documents to help guide teachers, as I mentioned, for example, your five strongest, your five weakest, and giving them time to reflect. And when they read the data, to, to reflect and answer this question, what did you notice about this? What have you noticed about that? And then to kind of guide them through reading their own data and how to infer what's happening. They will also prepare some of that data in easy-to-read formats, so they don't have to do a lot of the sorting. They will do the sorting for you, so that's easy to read, so you can see where your kids are falling in standards or just overall, as an overall test. Our curriculum team is also attending those building, building leadership team meetings and kind of saying, "This is what we want you to do. These are kind of our non-negotiables." And then the principal is there to kind of compliment, say, "As principal, I want to hold you accountable to these OST action plans. That this is what we're doing, and we're going to focus on some of this achievement." We also share strengths, instructional practices, and they also give an item analysis of past OST questions and frequency. For example, you may find out, hey, just to let you know, every year for the past 12 years, they've asked these three basic questions. They're going to ask it. Now, question is, when do you cover it in the classroom? Did you cover it before the test? Oh, you know what? We found out that maybe some of our content didn't get covered before the test. That was a key part of the test. And so it's analyzing past tests, analyzing where our kids are at, making adjustments and adapting as we go through it. Could be as simple as, you know what? We shouldn't be teaching this in the end of April. We probably need to move this more toward March. And then also analyzing, how much time are you spending on that standard? We shouldn't be spending as much time on that standard as maybe we should be spending on this standard, and having those discussions for them to understand. Another key part is leadership. All of our buildings select goals at the start of each school year. This year required each building and each building administrator to select an achievement goal that was based on student data, action steps, and that would, that it would take to achieve that goal, along with measurable indicators that would be reviewed in the fall and in winter. At the building level, our leadership teams have also dedicated their meeting times to reviewing plans, data, leading discussions, and ensure we are focusing on student data and achievement. And many of our staff members are leading our building-level PD days and staff meetings in those targeted discussions. I always said, it's one thing for me as a principal to get up and tell you kind of what you should do and focus on. It's another thing when one of their peers get up and talk to them. I use, I use examples showing my age of the old EF Hutton commercial. You know, when one, when one of the fellow math teachers speaks, stands up to talk about some math strategies that are working, that will be listened to better than the principal standing up and saying, "I want to tell you about some math strategies that I think are good for you." And so it's getting some of our, our high-achieving teachers to get in front of their peers and share what they're doing as well. Leadership is happening up and down the organization in our attempts to improve student achievement. So kind of in conclusion, we hope that our targeted work will result in improved state report card, or at least we'll be able to move students further along than what they were. We always talk about taking kids around the track. As an example, you start at the line, you go all the way around to the same finish line. But if we can get a kid to go a little further, to ensure that they go a little further, doesn't matter where they start. They may start a little behind some of their peers, or they may be, like we talked about our gifted, they may be well in front, but the goal is to get them at least all the way around one time. Get you all the way around one time, and then maybe a little more. Then, then we pushed you. We've gotten you a little better than where you were when you started. That's the goal, to continue to push kids all the way around. We're not going to stop our work in this area. Let's say we come back with 25 stars, doesn't mean we're going to stop doing this. We will continue to do this because this is what's good for kids, to kind of see where they're at, where they're scoring, use our resources that are available to us, and improve instruction as we go along. So kudos to our BLTs, our building admins, our curriculum team on their dedication to help improving our student achievement. I know that's a lot.
It's good.
Let everybody take a deep breath, and then we'll go to questions, comments, board? Anyone? Go ahead.
I was just going to say, we, I appreciate the thoroughness of that. And I know it's always a balance to not teach to the test, but to make sure that the content's covered so that our kids are successful when they do take the assessment. Because while we teach a whole lot of other things and life skills, that's not what we're measured on. We're measured on what the test is. So that balance of making sure, I appreciate that we're looking at the balance it takes to make sure that we're not teaching to the test, but that our students are prepared, not only for this test, but for their future.
It reminds me of kind of, we'll remember in history when we were getting notes from people that there was too much test anxiety and too much focus on the test. And, and I think, as we sometimes do, we perhaps overcorrected a bit to make sure that we weren't focusing on the test, as, as was the request of many of our parents, saying, "We don't, we want all this other rich curriculum, and we don't want to be worried." But then, again, there's that happy medium in there. And then I also think there's some challenges in some of the metrics, and even some of the interesting tweaks that I understand we're making regarding when you have kids that are subject accelerated, which, again, we have, you know, if you look at our math classes, for example, our eighth graders are taking ninth-grade math in eighth grade. So that takes out an entire cohort of our advanced students from getting tested on that eighth-grade test. So that tends to skew the data. And another data point I thought was interesting, government, for example. A lot of our kids are taking that over the summer. They're not tested till probably 11 months after they covered that material. So making some tweaks where it's not even changing what or how we're teaching, just changing how we're assessing kids can have a significant impact on the look of our report card, where it's things we've been doing. We just haven't played along to make sure that the results reflected as well as they should have, what we were doing and accomplishing in our classroom. So I, when I, when I was looking at the report card again, reviewing for this meeting, you know, third-grade literacy or reading guarantee, we have three stars on that metric, but 99.8% of our students were able to advance to the fourth grade and pass the third-grade reading guarantee. So it's just interesting how some of what success looks like and failure looks like for these metrics. So I appreciate that we're kind of digging in, doing some credentialing, some different things that are what the state is giving credit for, but isn't necessarily what we chose to focus on.
Great. Try.
Mr. Dean?
Thank you so much, Mr. Vogelmann. Your strategy is, is great, very well defined. And what I like about this is that when I'm only like practicing, teaching these kids to score necessarily, but preparing them for life. And I also like that strategy of not just stopping at the, the track as in scoring, but going above and beyond. So that is preparing these kids. Thank you for, for that. I think you're, you're on the right track. Thank you.
I, I appreciate you addressing our opportunities and creating a plan to address those opportunities. I liked hearing about the professional discussions that are going on between teachers. I think that is something that we missed on our last audit, that people, the teachers are, you know, done with the students at the end of the year, but the next teacher isn't aware of the opportunities or what they were going through. So that communication is, is a great piece. And I like that some of these programs are helping our kids with their critical thinking skills. And, and within that, that's really going to help, you know, our children. And I'm also looking at the student subgroup, or the, I'm sorry, I'm looking at our students who had internet connectivity to do their schoolwork, which was a 31.9%. And I know that we have, we're wanting to get Google devices for all of our students, but there are some that are struggling to have access to internet. Is this, is there a plan for the school to?
I'm not familiar with where you're getting that. If you want to send it to me-
Yeah, that's on the Ohio School Report Card. So, yeah, I can definitely send that to you. I didn't know if you're aware of that. But thank you.
And, and, sorry, I mean, but some of the, some of the things that we have done, I give credit to our, once again, our technology team. And some of our students that may have access issues, we do give some buildings MiFi's to give to some of those kids that may be of need, so that they can use as kind of, it's their own personal Wi-Fi device that they can connect. They don't have to have internet access. So we try and help some of those kids. We know that our kids have need that, you know, we give them, we give them Chromebook and say, "Good luck," and they don't have access. And so some of those kids that we know are in areas where they can't access, we try and help when we can.
Okay. Well, thank you. I look forward to seeing the results from your plan.
We, we are too. I, it's not going to hurt us. It, it's not going to hurt us. And, and I gotta give credit to Justin Wilson, Justin Frost. They've done a lot of the good work at Secondary, Christina France, Andrew Wheatley, trying to think of some of the other people that, Krista Heidenreich, Emily Herman. Those are a lot of the drivers who've done a lot of the work at the building level, going to the BLT meetings, month in, month out. Mark Byrd, sitting there, having discussions, challenging principals and staff to push themselves in to look at these areas. Todd Hartman's another one. Teresa Brock. They're, they're all doing the work at the building level. So those are the people that should be getting the kudos, not, not, not here. Those are people doing the work that are pushing our people, and our teachers that are taking and embracing it. And I think that most of them realized, and they have that pride, that 17 isn't, isn't us. That's not us. And so what can we, a big thing I always said as a coach, you know, control what you can control. And so if there's things we can control, we should try and control them. And that is putting some of these efforts, as we have, to try and improve student achievement.
So my final comments, I'm not aware of the 39.1, so that number surprises me a bit, if you can get back to us on that. I will say, I think, and it certainly was demonstrated when we had to close down, in terms of providing technology to our students, we have come such a long way in the last several years. And even just what you're talking about, making sure that there's equal access to technology through whatever means we need to do that. So thank you for the great work that our staff has done on that. And thank you also, Mr. Vogelmann, to you and the curriculum team. The Board made it clear that this was a major priority for us, that our student achievement was not where it needed to be, at least in terms of our state testing. And you have picked that up and really run with it. So thank you for that work, and we'll look forward to hearing further from you. I would also like us to have in the near future, and I think other Board members have expressed this as well, an update on our gifted programming, since we changed that model from what it was previously. I'd like to understand where that population is. Go ahead.
Also, I pulled up that connectivity piece on the report card. It shows that student access to broadband was 31.3%. No regular access to internet was 0.2%. And then unknown access was 67.8%. So it's only showing 0.2 with no regular access, and a 2/3 we don't know. So I just want to be careful that we don't make too many assumptions based on the unknown versus quantifiable data.
Perhaps you could dig into that and get back to us with some further information.
Didn't we, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Didn't during the pandemic, we also worked with businesses that had internet access, and we put little stickers in the window that said Lakota with a Wi-Fi, so that if a student was able to get to a local business, restaurant, coffee shop. They kind of were identified, so they knew where there was-
Now, you're showing that you've been here a while, because that was about four years ago, when we first started rolling out Chromebooks, that that was a concern. And we worked with local, local businesses that would put a sign, that Wi-Fi here, Lakota Wi-Fi, welcome here, so that kids knew they could go in there, and they could take in their Chromebook, and they could-
Yeah.
-connect to their Wi-Fi and get work done. They would be resourceful. They were finding those places around town where they knew they could go.
It's come a long way. So thank you for that. Thank you for the update. We'll move on to number 10. We do not have Board action items at this time. Is that correct? Move to number 11, Treasurer's Recommendations, Action Items. A, the approval of Board Minutes; B, the approval of the monthly financial reports; and C, adopt the resolution accepting the amounts and the rates as determined by the Budget Commission, and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. And those Board Minutes are from the February 6th Board of Education meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Discussion? Hearing none, please call the rule.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Dean?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes. Board will move to number 12, Superintendent Recommendations, Action Items. A, approve the personnel items. The B, approve the base bid and the alternates, numbers 2, 3, and 4 from NIRA Construction for pavement rehabilitation projects district-wide. The base bid is $533,270. The alternate bid is $100,073,490. C, approve field trips, and D, approve donations. Is there a motion?
Madam President, can we pull out section, hold on, C?
All right, we will go to A, B, and D. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Casper. Is there any discussion?
I appreciated Chris's update on the, or I'm not sure, honestly, if we cut it from you or Chris, I apologize, on the bids, and that we had had a positive experience with the vendor that we were able to use again. So thank you for the thoroughness of that bid process.
Without anything further, please call the rule.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Dean?
Who did you say?
What did you say? Mr. Dean? Oh.
Mr. Dean?
Yes. Ms. Bodie?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes. The sound in here is a little, we're going to have to get used to everything.
We're going to have to talk slower up here.
Yeah. Superintendent Recommendation, C, approve field trips. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Is there discussion?
Yes.
Mrs. Bodie?
So one of these field trips is for the Ohio Scholastic Media Association, for Spark. And this is an activist organization that has and is soliciting students around the country, and now at Lakota, to help advance their political agendas. This is activism, straight up and simple, and anyone can go to their website and see for theirself. Activism is a serious business and should not be taken lightly. Activism is complaining in its most egregious and provocative form. Activism, because of this, is a last resort, and anyone engaging in last-resort activities ought to do so with the utmost unquestionable certainty of their position. Activism is a form of complaining that can and does create situations where people can and do die. With few exceptions, students have little experience from which to make decisions of magnitude, decisions of consequence. With every expect, with, with very few expectations, high school students do not possess the maturity to risk their lives and the lives of others by engaging in political activism. I agree with those that see children as innocent and pliable, and are primarily, if not exclusively, led by adults in all matters that are not typical of childhood or adolescence and adolescence behavior. In other words, adults are leading the activism. Adults are choosing the focus and rationale for the activism. This is not like choosing sides of a volleyball game. And if a parent wants to do this- And if a parent wants to do this for their child, they have every right to do it, to teach it to their child, but this school has no business teaching and promoting activism. I have witnessed firsthand our students being taught activism in the classroom, and I will continue to work to highlight the problems inherent on this practice until it's gone. I will not vote to approve the field trip to the O S M A.
Thank you, Mrs. Bodie. I'm sure there's some board discussion to follow. I will start. I will say that I see Spark as one of the shining stars in our curriculum, and that is not because I agree necessarily with the stance that they take. But I see that as an opportunity for students to learn, to research, and understand all sides of an issue, to advocate for their side of an issue, which I see as an adult skill that we all need to have, to do it with data, to do it with evidence, and then to experience real-world life in that way. I don't necessarily always agree with the positions that they take, very much so, but I do see it as an important part of our curriculum. It's been an award-winning part of our curriculum for many years. That would be my opinion. Other board members?
Mrs. Casper.
I would just say, if you don't think our students are the ones that are deciding what they want to talk about, what they want to research, and what they write about, you haven't met our students. They, no Spark student is being led to do something that they don't want to do by an adult. Their passion for whatever the topic is, and again, we don't always agree with the topics and their stance, but whatever the topic is that they're researching, I trust you, it's because they want to know about it. And they are old enough, these are high schoolers. These are not, we're not sending elementary kids to a conference, these are high schoolers. They know what they're, this is their future. We have many, many Spark kids who now have gone on to work for national publications, for national newspapers, national radio stations. This is not something that they're being indoctrinated to, this is something that they're passionate about. And I do believe they have the ability to know what they want to research and what they want to talk about.
Mr. Dean, Mrs. Schaefer.
Like everybody else said, I do not always agree with what sometimes they write, and sometimes they ask some difficult questions. So I understand why it might be uncomfortable for us to disagree with them. However, these are high school students. I remember when I was in high school, what I love to do, I want to do it, and I want to start practicing it before I get into real life. So for me, if there's anything specifically that you might have, Ms. Bodie, I think it's good for you to bring it up, and to ask them questions, like, okay, how did you make this decision? And how do you arrive in making this? That's the things that you think you do not agree with them. I have asked some of them questions like that. So, but to make a conclusive statement that probably that's what they're going to learn, or where they learn from, might not necessarily be right. So I don't want to prevent them opportunity to learn.
Mrs. Schaefer.
I'm confident that our students have achieved those critical thinking skills that we discussed earlier, that are so imperative that they have, and with that, they're able to come to their own conclusions. And I have the confidence in our students, staff, and their families to make the decision of whether or not they would like to participate in this conference, and I would like to support them to have that student choice, voice of our, for our students and families, so they can continue to get the accolades that Spark continues to earn. And if we're talking about preparing kids for college and career, we invariably hear that kids who are in Spark, and the way they're able to speak to adults, the way they're able to interview, and the way they're able to participate, even if they have no interest whatsoever in going into media, it's able to hone skills that they will use for the rest of their life through public speaking, interviewing, and critical thinking. So anything I can do to support those efforts, I look forward to.
Anything else? Mr. Vogelmann, this is a recommendation coming from the superintendent. Do you have any concerns whatsoever with our students' safety in attending this field trip?
No, I do not. I don't believe this is the first time they've gone, and they go all over the place. I remember when I was at East as assistant principal, I went with them to the national conference in Philadelphia, in which, as many of you said, they got a lot of awards for the work that they do. And so I've never heard of any kind of concern with where they've gone on field trips before. But I believe this is a, this is a repeat trip for them, not a new one.
Do you have any idea if they're engaging in political activity while they're on those field trips?
I have no idea. I don't believe so.
To the best of your knowledge?
To the best of my knowledge, I do not believe so.
So I would see it as a professional development opportunity for the students?
Yes.
And safe?
Yes.
Very well. Any other comments on this?
I stand by what I said.
Mr. Zink, could you call the roll?
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Dean.
Yes.
Ms. Bodie.
No.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes. Board, we will move to closing comments. We'll start with Mrs. Bodie.
All right, first of all, I would like to stay, say that I think some of the speakers this evening have a reality that is a little skewed, and might need to practice critical thinking skills themselves, instead of reacting with their feelings. And I think that.
Audience.
They need to reevaluate the role of a school, the school, and the role of a parent. I also think that, everybody knows that the education system has been politicized for years, especially with the recent stance of the NEA, who the LEA is a part of, and some of our school board members have popped on liberal-led school board meetings, training online. I would also like to talk about a post that was put out this week for the parents in the community, a victory for truth, congratulations to the Lakota School Board member Darby Bodie. In the wake of Bodie's legal counsel threatening.
Audience, please.
Litigation, the Cincinnati Enquirer was forced to remove the lies in the article they published by leftist contributor Madeline Mitchell, ostensibly covering the resignation of Superintendent Matt Miller. Darby, the Enquirer took out that you had made false statements, they took out that Matt Miller had been vindicated. Robert F. Crosskey Esquire. This may be the first victory in the fight for honest media coverage, but it will not be the last one, as parents and the community continue to fight against the leftist agendas that have come to dominate our education system. We are winning. And then my response to the community and the parents of Lakota, this is a great and important victory for the community, and those Lakota parents who are and have been standing up and taking back their children's education. Your actions have turned heads in spite of a school board and media who shamelessly shill for another who is pushing or will defend these radical leftist programs and ideologies. Please make no mistake, the will of the community is winning to the day. Conservatives are no longer being routinely led around by the nose of the left and their fake Republican allies. As was recently pointed out by Rich Hoffman, the gun fitters, the gun by their sky.
Audience, please let her finish.
The majority of voters do not want these programs and are showing everyone that they're not going away. I ran against the leftist agenda in 2021 and was elected by a wide margin. And I can tell you that the support I'm getting today is greater than it was then, far greater. Congratulations.
Audience, please.
And then I would also like to respond to your pornography site that was put up. I want to be clear, when I made a typo and exposed a pornographic site for approximately five hours, Lynda and the rest of this board let me and the whole community know that they did not care one bit, it was unintentional, that no children were exposed, or that it was removed right away. All they wanted was my resignation. They called for an emergency meeting and made certain that every media outlet knew about it. They assured the public during this circus that in no uncertain terms, what I had done was beyond the fray, completely unacceptable. I understand that Lynda did not intend for pornography to be published on her domain any more than I imagined, a porn site was one letter away from spelling a website that was being used for educating our children. A not-so-insignificant fact that I believe was purposely buried in the melee. But there is a big difference between letting a domain lapse and a typo. I'm sorry, but we do not all let domains lapse. That's not a given, especially if you're the president of the school board with all the responsibilities that go with it. Everyone makes typos, and everyone will always do so, but everyone does not let domains lapse. It is well-known and well-established, what can happen to you when your domain unintentionally lapses, and very few of them are good or desired. If you let this happen, you should not just be apologetic, you should be going out of your way to let the community know that you understand how serious it is, and that you will put things in place so it doesn't happen to you again. I never called for Lynda's resignation over this negligence, I pointed out her hypocrisy, and exposed the maliciousness that characterized this board's pursuit of me for making a much lesser offense. I pointed out that by Lynda's own standards, she should be resigning.
Audience, audience, please. Are you finished, Mrs. Bodie?
Yep.
Mrs. Schaefer.
Again, I do not think this was an apples-to-apples situation, and I think, again, had the original actions been immediately met with an apology, and immediately been met by a removal versus leaving it up after multiple iterations, and then doubling down to say that you were glad because this is what our children were being taught, which, again, has never been able to be substantiated. So I think that the two situations are not the same situation, and therefore have been dealt with differently. I appreciate it, I would like to get this back to, once again, away from distractions, away from what we shouldn't be focusing on, and back to what we should. So student achievement, very nice job tonight on the report card, appreciate your refocus, appreciate both of you, Adam and Rob, having to continually focus on how we can do better, and how might we serve our students in this community as well as we possibly can. So thank you, in the midst of everything, for your continued focus on what matters, our kids. I would also like to say it was a pleasure to attend the Lieutenant Governor's presentation, John Houston came down to recognize Ben Doherty for a cybersecurity award, he won the Presidential Cybersecurity Award. And in speaking about his work, they spoke about that he was on a mission bigger than himself, and the selfless sacrifice that he did. In the midst of the presentation, to our staff member, his kids, who were in the audience, are his students, not his actual children, yelled out, "We love you, Mr. Dean." And I think that spoke to that relationship and how much he cared. Also, there was Kirk Harris, I may have mispronounced his last name, who is the cybersecurity strategic advisor to the governor, and he spoke about this program and cybersecurity being the best program in the state, that he's two or different programs, and again, kudos to our staff for all the work and blazing the way, and making sure our kids have access to life-changing opportunities in education. What is the goal of an educator? To change the trajectory of a student's life, and that's exactly what this program is doing for our kids. When they can graduate with a high school diploma, no debt, go into a job in excess of seventy thousand dollars, that will be life-changing for these families. So congratulations to Mr. Doherty. They all mentioned he could make significantly more in the private sector, but he, like most of our educators, who could make more in the private sector, have a calling to serve our students. So thank you for that hard work, and to all of our staff for continuing to do the work despite the noise.
Thank you.
One of the reasons, and I'm doing this just because of my own, because I want to, one of the reasons that I like the idea of making public comments a listening session before the board meeting, for a couple of reasons. One, now that we sit up here, and I don't like sitting up here, by the way, we sit up here, we don't have the connection that I feel like we could have if we were in a different location, a little more relaxed, a little more of a listening session. And I also think that maybe things would be better during the meeting at the microphone, because people would not get, go to the microphone to blast a board member, a superintendent of an individual, and then get up and leave, when you know that the only reason they were here is so that they could speak publicly and chastise somebody about something that isn't even something insignificant, even, no matter what it is. It's just frustrating to me that that's how we operate. So for me, that's one of the reasons that I like the idea of moving public comments outside of the meeting, that the grandstanding has to stop from here and from there. It's really hard to sit up here, and it's a thankless job, trust me, it's a thankless job right now, and no matter how hard you try, if you don't agree with somebody, you're called a bad board member, or we have to have better board members, more professional board members, instead of doing what we can to figure out how to do our job, which is educate students, and not all of this other nonsense that goes on the profferal. It's very frustrating to me. Again, thank you, Rob, for the presentation, it's always good to dig into the report card. This, and we're coming to the end of the year where lots of fun and exciting things are going to happen, lots of choir concerts and band concerts, and academic achievement awards, and all kinds of fun things, so I love this time of the year that leads up then to graduation. The presentation by these students today was crazy good. They, I mean, they're so eloquent at their age that it's unbelievable, and the staff that's been doing this for thirty-three years and has that passion that she's so excited about when she talks about her students. It was great that most of us got to go to the Edge Teen Centers fundraiser this Saturday, last Saturday night, they do such good for our kids, and to see the community come out to raise the money, so they continue, they're a small nonprofit that works on a shoestring budget, and they do tremendous things for our kids, they give them a safe place to go after school, both at East, in the building, and now at West, in the library. They offer great programs, they offer community service, and to hear the passion from some of the students that they had on the presentation, they weren't actually there in person, at the presentation, on what Edge means to them. So it's a great night for us to be able to recognize and thank them for all they do for our students. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Vogelmann.
Sure. Just a couple reminders, this week is the end of third quarter, on Thursday. We are wrapping up this quarter. Friday, there is no school for kids, that is a professional development day for our teachers. So that means that after this week, we only have forty-five days of school remaining in this school year. So it's rapidly approaching, as some of you said. And just reminder, spring break is coming up the week of March twentieth to the twenty-fourth as well, so we'll end the quarter, then we have a week, and then we take a week for spring break. The other thing, thank you to our technology department, I know they're scrambling back there, they're trying their best to make this work tonight, and our business operations department, the administrative team here at East Freshmen, to make this happen tonight, and we're working out the bugs, we'll get better. But I appreciate their dedication and work to pull this off. The other thing is, tomorrow is a big day in the Vogelmann household, because we will no longer have children, as my youngest becomes a teenager.
Teenager.
So, I'm not looking at that person, because I don't want to see the spots, but I just wanted to take the opportunity to brag on her, and also thankful that my family chose to come out again tonight to support me.
Were we going to sing "Happy Birthday"?
I think I would be in big trouble.
I was going to say, we won't, Abby, we won't let him sing to you.
We're just going to move on, so, but thank you for, thank you for your positive feedback on the report I gave tonight, and we're trying, and I appreciate, and we're not perfect by any stretch of the imagination, but we're going to continue to try and do the best we can for every kid that we come across. Every kid that moves into this area, this is their school. It's not my school, it's their school. We're required to educate them and take care of them, how they are, where they are, no matter where they come from, where they're at academically, economically. Come on in, we'll do our best to get you, get you around that lap.
Thank you. Mr. Zink.
Yeah, I want to echo what Rob had said about the tech department, facilities department, the East Freshmen staff for pulling this off, there was a lot of work went into this, and I know we'll probably talk about it tomorrow, and what we could have done better, but I think it really went pretty well. think it really went pretty well, all things considered. Also, thanks to everybody for their patience on the processes that we've been putting in place and trying to pull off and trying to make sure that they work as well as possible for everybody. So I appreciate that. And also just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. If people didn't care, then they wouldn't come out. So thanks for showing that you do care what we have going on. Go to bed.
Thank you. Mr. D?
Yeah, I want to start with a shout-out to Ms. Amy Alexandra and the students that came out tonight to showcase what is happening in our school. Using that also as a point of contact to thank the teachers that are doing their best for Lakota School students. As we can see the result tonight, I wasn't very good with math. When I see these kids talk about math, how they're doing very well, how much they love mathematics, it's something to be proud of. And that's why I sit down here, I'm happy I'm sitting on this board saying that. And I want to say thank you to teachers that are doing what they're supposed to be doing. Rob Vogelmann, thank you for your report today. You've given me enough energy today to see that you have a good strategy because the goal is develop our students. Student achievement is huge and is part of what I think we all want. So thank you, and I urge you to continue to do what you're doing. Don't let anybody distract you. Public participation, I know I raised a strong voice on that. And like it was said by previous speakers, the reason is we want to hear more from the community so that if the purpose is for you to speak to the board, we'll lift those restrictions and then hold it as a different meeting. That way, we're able to hear from you. But if the reason is to come up here and blast teachers, blast everybody else, and put our school district as a show, people having a wrong information about our school district, then I think that is defeated. But if we can raise the time, 45 minutes, and let everybody speak and it's not recorded, at least it's for the board members to know what is in your minds, who represent you. So I support that, and I stand strongly with that. Talking about the issue of who is a victim and who is not a victim, who is typo, who is not typo, who is writing what, who is not writing what, I have said before, when I sit here and some people's goal is to make sure I fail so that they are discelebrated, I think it's not a good thing. This situation that we just went through that is brought back again is not a good thing. I hope we are all Lakota. We choose Lakota because we want to be a community. Let's hear each other out. Let's, we can agree to disagree. There are many issues I may not agree with you, and you may not agree with me, but don't try to damage me so that you look good. I love politics, but I would never, if I'm going to look at any situation, I'm going to look at it, how fair is it for everybody? How fair is it? I'm not going to impose my choice at you, but I might disagree with you, and I'll tell you why I disagree. But let's disagree to agree, but not to damage each other. I became scared in the last two weeks, I mean, the last one week, when I see the things that are happening. Let's be a community, let's love each other, let's support each other, let's support the students. This is their future, and that is why I stand for. And we have a lot of people that write all kinds of things that are not true. I don't like lies, I don't support liars. I've been told that you're distancing yourself. I'm not distancing myself from anybody. I am distancing myself from anything that is not true because I know how I got here. My integrity is very important to me. I'm going to do what is right. There's a process in doing everything. You might not like the process, but there's a process, and let's follow the process and get it done. So Lakota, we have a big business to run, and this is it. It's for our kids to be successful in life, and every distractor should be stopped. Saying that, I want to thank you, Ms. President. I know you've spent almost 20 years doing this. I wonder how you did it?
Quite that long.
Eighteen years, right?
Sixteen.
Almost sixteen years on the board, and prior to that, maybe four years volunteering. So I don't think it is fair for anybody to do that to you. And Ms. Schaefer, I know your name has been purchased. I hope we're not going to hear anything. I'm going to start spending money on protecting my name. Identity theft is not good, it's not me. But you want to impose it on me? No. So I think we need to rethink what we're doing as a community. Do we want to destroy this community, or do we want it to prosper as it used to be? So with that being said, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. D. Thank you for all the comments, board. Several things tonight, and I'll start with the hard ones, actually. Mrs. Manir, I don't know if she's still here or not, but I do want to comment just for a moment on her comments from the microphone. I did respond privately to her email, and I'm going to leave most of that there. And I will say that I felt her comments tonight were filled with a lot of misinformation about the entire board and situations that have occurred. And I made a commitment to Mrs. Manir that I would commit to meeting with her personally and respecting and listening to her comments. And that while it's in her court, I'm happy to do so. She asked me finally if I would not engage with her in public, and so I would ask that she do that with me in private as well. She continues to send me private texts. I've asked for those to be stopped, and I've asked that they're be sent to the entire board so that there's transparency. So I respectfully ask that that happen. I'm not going to talk about another board member. I will just say I've said what I needed to say earlier tonight and just reiterate a couple of points. I did apologize. I regret the situation. It's a terrible distraction. And it's embarrassing, but that's not the point, really. It's a distraction from the work that we need to be doing. I didn't initiate a post, it was a link. I did apologize, and I was also willing to accept the will of the board, be that whatever they wanted that to be. When I became aware of the situation, I removed the link immediately from my page. And most importantly to me, it wasn't paired with a message that obscene material on the LinkedIn website is something that we are teaching in our curriculum. And therefore, I wasn't sorry for posting it. It's simply not happening in our schools, and it's not right to imply that. As Mrs. Schaefer said, let's shift back to what our focus needs to be, and I appreciate your comments about that. The cybersecurity award is very, very exciting that one of our staff who went out of his way to build a new program in coordination with support from the district is benefiting our students. I had a chance, this is a little ironic and almost a little embarrassing still, but I'd already set up a visit to one of our cybersecurity classrooms on Monday after I had the cybersecurity issue on Sunday and thought, I wish I'd had one of these classes a long time ago. I was thankful that our students are getting the opportunity to learn about ways to avoid those things for themselves, but also ways to help people that go through those kind of situations. And it was amazing, and they were engaged, and they were having just a really interesting, you're watching the skills, you're watching their minds working, you're watching the collaboration and working together, and all those soft skills that they're going to need when they enter the workforce. And we saw that tonight with our math kids collaborating at this young age and understanding the importance of helping each other and the support. It's exactly what I think we need to be doing, and it's thrilling to see it happening. They wouldn't let me join the cybersecurity class, unfortunately, but I would have if I could have. I want to remind everybody that our next meeting on April 6th, we'll start our listening sessions, and that will be from 5:30 to 6:15. Then we'll have a brief break, and we'll go into our regular board meeting. The signup process is still the same, 9:00 a.m. on Friday morning, closing at 9:00 a.m. on Monday morning. And the agenda should be posted at 9:00 a.m. on Friday, as we've normally done it. And it will be looser parameters on what people can talk about, as Mr. Vogelmann said. I'd like to thank the staff, the administration, our janitorial staff, our technology department, and you two for moving so quickly after we got the recommendation that we did to facilitate making this change. I know that it was a lot to go through and really appreciate it. I know the board does as well. Graduation dates, just to put those on the radar?
Yeah, I believe May 17th and 19th, Wednesday. And Lakota Central is on Tuesday, the 16th.
I think Mr. D needed to hear that one more time.
Lakota Central is Tuesday, May 16th. East is Wednesday, May 17th, and then West is Friday, May 19th, I believe, going off memory.
Mr. Zink, congratulations on that ninth auditor award. I know when we moved you into place, we set kind of a high goal and said, you know, you got to keep that record going, and you did it. So congratulations, and to your team. Appreciate that work. So with that, I'll get back to everybody on it. Thank you, though. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Casper. Is there a second?
I second the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mrs. Bodie. Mr. Zink?
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
Yes.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight.